Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's November 7, 2019, public meeting. For all in attendance, today's meeting is being livestreamed and will also be available as a video. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. But before we proceed with the rest of the agenda, there are several procedural matters for us to take up today. The Commission must nominate and vote on who should run the November open session, which is the first agenda item. In the absence of a chairman, the bylaws require the Commission to elect a member to perform the functions of the chairman at the start of each meeting, with the understanding the vice-chairman is the likely person to be elected. Can we have a motion to run the meeting today? Has been a motion, and is there a second? There's a second. All in favor of me as vice-chairman running the meeting today, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you for that unanimous support. So, we have a lengthy agenda today, and recognizing that I would like the Commission -- recognizing that, I would like the Commission to consider moving Agenda Item 6A, which are comments on the concept plan for modifications to the National Law Enforcement Memorial, and Item 6B, comments on the concept plans for modifications to the Second Division Memorial to the Consent Calendar. This will help alleviate some of the burden, and I think that the Commission will see these proposals again for preliminary and final review, since these are preliminary comments that staff has put forth. If the commissioners would like to ask or any questions, have any questions or comments after we take this vote, I'd be open to that as we move through the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda for these two items?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. The ayes have it. Okay. Agenda Item 2 is the report of the chairman. So, I guess after -- everybody's probably tired of hearing about how great the Washington Nationals are, but we're all very excited here in DC about that. So, I visited with my client, Mark Lerner, yesterday, the owner of the Nationals, and had him sign my newspaper, so pretty excited about that. So, that's my celebrity moment. But on a more serious note, we are saddened by the loss of Congressman Elijah Cummings. As Chair of the House Government Oversight and Reform Committee, he served as an ex-officio-commissioner of the National Capital Planning Commission. We remember and will continue to be inspired in our work by his dedicated public service, his leadership, and his integrity. On behalf of the entire Commission, we send our condolences to his colleagues and his Big loss. Earlier this morning, several Commissioner members, Commission members, and staff went on a field trip to the Federal Reserve Board to learn more about upcoming proposals for their Washington facilities. We had an opportunity to meet with Chairman Powell and his committed staff at the Federal Reserve. I'd like to thank the staff of the Federal Reserve Board, and as well as our staff, for coordinating this very informative trip. And we'll look forward to hearing their proposals in our December meeting next month. Okay, let's move to Agenda Item 3. That's the report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. As part of NCPC's continuing exploration and commemoration issues, we're pleased to welcome Michael Murphy, founding principal of the Bass Design Group, to present his firm's projects and to speak through their practice of harnessing the power of architecture to wrestle with our most difficult truths. One of Mr. Murphy's projects is the highly acclaimed National Memorial for Peace and Justice in Montgomery, Alabama. Our event called Space and Memory will be held on Monday, December 9, 6:30 PM at NCPC. You do have a card that has the information attached. It will also get -- this will also be published on our website, and we hope members of the public are able to attend. We'll also note that our public comment period for the draft federal transportation element of the comprehensive plan will close on Tuesday, November 12, and further information can be found on our website. We hope the public will submit their comments with respect to the draft element. And that concludes my presentation. You also have a written report in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Okay. Agenda Item 4 is a legislative update with Ms. Skyler.
Thank you. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. That helps move the meeting along. We appreciate that. Agenda Item 5 is the Consent Calendar, which we earlier adjusted. There are now five Consent Calendar items on this month's agenda. The first is for final site development plans for the National Native American Veterans Memorial, proposed on the grounds of the National Museum of the American Indian, and submitted by the Smithsonian Institution. The second is for the preliminary and final site development plans for antenna relocations on the roof of the Liberty Loan Building at 401 14th Street Southwest, submitted by General Services Administration. The third is comments on concept plans for the new Banneker Academic High School at 925 Rhode Island Avenue Northwest. This proposal was submitted by the DC Department of General Services. The fourth consent item is for comments on concept plans to modify the National Law Enforcement Memorial located at Judiciary Square, as submitted by the National Park Service. And the fifth item is for comments on concept plans to modify the Second Division Memorial located prominently at 17th Street and Constitution Avenue Northwest. Is there any discussion on any of the Consent Calendar items this time? Hearing no interest in discussion, is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Unanimously passed. Three pages. We used to skip. Very good. Next is formerly Agenda Item 6C on the open session agenda. This is for approval of the draft master plan for the Naval Support Facility, Sutland, as submitted by the Department of the Navy. The Commission deferred action on this plan at our September meeting with the intent that the applicant and NCPC staff and others could address some of the parking-related issues. And I understand that a lot of work has been done, and Mr. Wile will make a presentation for that. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. The United States Department of the Navy is back with a revised parking proposal as part of their draft NSF Sutland Installation Development Plan. The Navy initially submitted the master plan for NCPC review in September, and the Commission deferred action to allow the Navy time to explore alternative parking replacement opportunities instead of constructing a new surface lot. Many elements of the EDP remain the same, so to save time and help focus our Commission review, I will only be discussing the new proposal and how the new plan compares to the previous September submission. As a reminder, the Naval Support Facility Sutland installation is located in Prince George's County, Maryland, approximately five miles to the southeast of the U.S. Capitol Building, along the historic Sutland Parkway and Metro Rail Green Line adjacent to the Sutland Metro Station. The installation is a 42-acre secure property encompassed within a larger 226-acre federal enclave known as the Sutland Federal Center. The Federal Center is administered by the United States General Services Administration with the Washington National Records Center, National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, and the United States Census Bureau as tenants. Two key differences define the Navy's new short-term proposal from the previous plan in September. First, NSF Sutland will eliminate 274 onsite employee spaces; and second, the Navy will extend their current lease, plus lease an additional 150 spaces from GSA in lieu of constructing a new surface lot. The result of these actions will be to improve the overall NSF Sutland ratio from 1 to 2.1 to 1 to 2.5 within the next five years, which is halfway toward their ultimate long-term 1 to 3 parking ratio goal. To help illustrate the changes, here you can see the two areas in yellow where parking will be reduced in the north lot and with the demolition of the NSF Sutland garage, as well as where the additional 150 leased spaces will be in the Census Bureau lot to the east. Here is a summary table that compares NSF Sutland's current parking inventory to both the September and November short-term proposals, and I've highlighted the changes made since September, which includes elimination of the previously planned new 650-space lot and the proposal's more modest result, which would have only improved the ratio from a 1 to 2.14 to a 1 to 2.17. In addition to these parking changes, the NSF Sutland Transportation Management Plan includes a number of short-term, five-year strategies that I wanted to highlight, including encouraging contractors to park at the Sutland Metro Rail Station, which has available capacity, facilitating carpool and vanpool formation in areas with employee residential concentrations, working to implement shuttle service between NSF Sutland, Sutland -- the Sutland Metro Rail Station, and other Department of Defense installations, as well as working with GSA to start an internal Federal Center shuttle route. And lastly, working with the Maryland Transit Administration to plan for additional commuter bus service to NSF Sutland. Regarding mid- and long-term actions, the TMP includes the following: working with GSA to plan for a new, more direct pedestrian path between NSF Sutland and the Sutland Metro Rail Station, potential employee relocations to other facilities in the region, decreasing employee parking by 1% per year over a 10-year period, and designing the new onsite NSF Sutland garage with a maximum 1 to 3 ratio capacity. And related to the proposal to construct the shorter pedestrian path, NCPC staff estimates that a more direct path may shorten the walk time from 18 to approximately 20 -- or 10 minutes. In follow-up to the Commission's September review, the Navy provided NCPC staff with additional travel time, survey and mapping data that demonstrates their need to reduce employee capacity gradually over the next 15 to 20 years, as NSF Sutland works toward attaining its overall long-term 1 to 3 goal, which is consistent with NCPC's comprehensive plan policy. Based on their current travel data, staff believes that the proposed 1 to 2.5 goal is a reasonable five-year target, considering where many employees live, to the southeast and south of Sutland, which makes using Metro Rail less convenient for many employees. So here is the Executive Director's recommendation, and you have the full recommendation in your EDR, so I will only go through the sections that have changed since September. Starting off with these two notes, the background and planning assumptions remain the same. The next section, Proposed Development, remains the same as well. Here is the first section with new language, which reflects the previous Commission deferral in September, and that the previous proposal included construction of a new surface lot, which would have largely maintained NSF Sutland's current parking ratio. In this portion of the short term -- in this short-term proposal section, we revise the language to reflect the new changes to the proposal, so we note the improvement to NSF Sutland's ratio over the next five years. We note that GSA has agreed to extend the Navy's current parking lease, plus lease an additional 150 spaces, and we find that the Navy submitted additional employee travel data in support of their five-year 1 to 2.5 goal. Here's the rest of the short-term proposal section here, and we note that the Navy is committing to various travel demand management actions over the next five years. We commend GSA and the Navy for working together to develop a successful planning outcome as part of their master planning process, and we note that the Navy is seeking funding to help GSA with its Sutland Federal Center TMP update. Here's the long-term parking proposal section, which is different from September, and we note that the TMP includes a number of actions that will help NSF Sutland attain its ultimate 1 to 3 long-term goal. We note that the future garage will not exceed the 1 to 3 ratio goal, and we are requesting that the Navy submit their proposed future TMP monitoring memorandum to NCPC for review so that we can remain aware of their travel behavior modification efforts. And then this is the final section, which remains unchanged from September. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions, and the applicant also has a number of people here who can answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wile. So, let's see. Any questions for Mr. Wile, first of all? Okay, open up to discussion this item. Commissioner May, jump in there.
I believe there's been substantial progress from what we saw before. Undoubtedly, there's room for further improvement, but I think that, you know, we've made a lot of gains. It's actually quite remarkable in many ways, so I'm pretty pleased with what we see, especially the prospect of connecting the metro station directly to the building, and the fact that they're not -- there's not going to be a 650-space new parking lot built. So, I don't have much more to say than that. Let's keep going, go in the right direction.
Any other comments?
Just to -- if I could, just to piggyback on that, for me, it has to do with the fact that clearly they listened. Well, we were pretty loud. So, appreciate the response of the very clear and direct responsiveness to the concern that the commissioners had, and I agree with all of Commissioner May's comments as well. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Dixon.
Recognizing the tone, I would suggest that we move for adoption with a EDR.
I do have one quick question. It really is about the -- I note that one of our notations in the EDR is about the ongoing monitoring of the TMP in future updates, and I guess wondering, how often does that normally happen? When would we see those?
So, as part of their TMP, they had a strategy to start monitoring their TMP, you know, the performance of their TMP programs. It does not give a specific time as to when that would happen. In the past, based on my experience, federal agencies and campuses, some of them conduct commuter surveys every two to three years, so that might be a possibility, maybe in a few years, that they come back and at least submit a report for staff review. And I know in our draft transportation element policies, we do recommend regular TMP monitoring reports submitted for at least staff review.
Yeah, I was encouraged to see that in the EDR, and want to encourage that to continue, you know, and I agree that there's been substantial progress, and I want to thank all the involved parties for the cooperative effort and productive work to get to this resolution. Thank you for listening, and thank you for providing additional information that helped all of us better understand your needs, as well as to create a better dialogue of what we were all trying to achieve here. So, I really want to acknowledge the work done to get to this place. So, now, I think we have a motion to -- pardon me.
Hold on, hold on. Because I, you know, I'm often accused of never having anything nice to say.
Or anything to say at all.
So, I would like to thank the staff at NIMIC and at GSA for, you know, setting all the old stuff aside and thinking anew. That's not always easy to do. And you're done great, so let's vote.
All right. So, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion to approve this EDR for Naval Support Facility Sutland master plan. Please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Great work.
Thank you.
Next is formerly Agenda Item 6D, which are comments on the Concept Master Plan Amendment for the Department of Homeland Security consolidation at St. Elizabeth's. I think Mr. Webb will be giving the presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The General Services Administration has submitted for your comments a concept for an amendment to the master plan of the Department of Homeland Security Headquarters consolidation at St. Elizabeth's Hospital in Washington, DC. At the concept review for a master plan amendment, the Commission should be focused on such issues as: is the concept consistent with NCPC's comprehensive plan and other policies? Is the concept appropriate for the site? And are there any particular unique or complex issues? As a reminder, the St. Elizabeth's West Campus is located at 2700 Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue in southeast Washington, DC. It is situated in the Congress Heights community in Ward 8, and overlooks Interstate 295, Bowling Air Force Base, and the Anacostia River. The site is 176 acres. Back in March, GSA provided an information presentation on the proposed concept for the amendment to the master plan. In the past, the Commission reviewed the final master plan to consolidate the headquarters on the St. Elizabeth's West Campus 10 years ago. Since then, the Commission has seen two master plan amendments: one in 2010 to amend the area of the plan for the U.S. Coast Guard Headquarters, and one in 2012 to relocate FEMA to the east campus and make some additional transportation improvements. I'll mention that the FEMA project has not moved forward on the east campus, and FEMA will be located on west campus. GSA is now planning to submit a third master plan amendment to the Commission in spring 2020, and at this time is requesting the Commission to comment on the concept shared back in March. The proposed amendment to the master plan is needed to address budget constraints and new programming requirements for DHS. The 2009 master plan approved by the Commission established a framework for 4.5 million gross square feet of office and support space between existing buildings and new development to house DHS. It also included an additional 1.5 million gross square feet of parking. You can see here on the 2009 site plan, the buildings in brown represented existing development, the majority of which are contributing historic buildings to the National Landmark District designation, and the buildings in yellow represent new development that was proposed on the 2009 plan. The 2009 master plan attempted to balance the rehabilitation of historic buildings on the campus with new construction, and would have resulted in the rehabilitation of 51 of the 62 historic buildings. For the master plan amendment, GSA has developed a preferred concept of two buildings, each approximately 650,000 square feet on the plateau, and one additional 175,000-square-foot building, this location, located to the north of the new Coast Guard building. The new amendment does not add additional square footage from what was approved in 2009, but proposes a reduction to a total of 5.7 million gross square feet. The key difference is the amendment is focused on new construction, all on the west campus, as opposed to the combination of historic rehabilitation and new construction as envisioned in the 2009 master plan. The concept for the amendment proposes that 45 of the 62 historic buildings will be retained, rehabilitated, and repurposed for DH use in future project phases. Since many of you have not had an opportunity to visit St. Elizabeth's in person, I want to provide you a brief virtual tour to orient you to the west campus and key locations that will factor in my presentation and the discussion of GSA's preferred concept. We will first start -- the key locations I'll discuss will be circled in blue, and then I'll use the mouse to kind of direct your eye. And just to note that with the orientation of the site plans, north is actually to the left of the screen. The top of the screen is to the west. So, we'll start with the historic center building, circled in dark blue, that has been fully rehabilitated and serves as the offices for the Secretary of DHS. Next, we'll be moving to the south, which is the plateau area, which includes landscape features such as the lawn, shown here, which is the large quad around which the campus was designed. The historic administration row frames the lawn on the east side, with Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue to its east. And then the scattered historic pavilion buildings frame the lawn on the west side. Adjacent to the plateau is designated a no-build zone containing an eagle habitat. The historic Hitchcock Building is located on the north axis of the lawn, just being the lawn. And then moving to the west of the Hitchcock Building is a ravine that is adjacent to the historic power plant, and smoke towers. And I will mention the slope of the ravine has severe stabilization issues that GSA will attempt to resolve with the new construction. Here is the location of the historic power plants and the ice house, which have been identified to be retained under this concept. And then moving away from the plateau area is the Sweet Gun Lane Site, located next to the new Coast Guard Building, which is the Monroe Building. And it's right above the hill from the historic cemetery on the campus. Before I walk you through GSA's preferred concept for the master plan amendment, I want to provide some background, including a brief history of St. Elizabeth's Hospital. The history of St. Elizabeth's Hospital began in 1852, when Dorothea Dix, the advocate for modern treatment of mentally ill, persuaded Congress to appropriate $100,000 to build a model hospital for the treatment of the insane in Washington, DC. The hospital, which was operated by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services from the time of its construction in 1852, was in existence until the early 1990s, at which time the hospital closed and the patients were moved across Martin Luther King Avenue to the hospital on the east campus. In 1990, the Secretary of the Interior designated St. Elizabeth's a national historic landmark for the national significance of the site and its association with 20th century social and humanitarian movements. Within St. Elizabeth's West Campus, there are 62 buildings that have been identified as contributing to the historic character of the national historic landmark. There were several key considerations that informed the Commission's review in 2009 for the original master plan, and these will continue to inform the future reviews of the master plan amendment. The examples include preserving the features of the national historic landmark and its contributing buildings on the campus, maintaining the openness of the lawn on the plateau, maintaining the campus's panoramic views of the Anacostia and Potomac Rivers and of Washington, DC, and protecting the views of the topographic bowl. St. Elizabeth's Hospital campus is located on the Anacostia Hills, one of the three hillsides that comprise Washington's topographic bowl. It is visible from prominent locations around the city. In this image, you can see this is what we talk about, the topographic, the edge, and these are the smokes -- historic smoke towers for the power plant on the west campus. Recognizing the need to amend the approved master plan, GSA reinitiated the Section 106 consultation process to engage the federal agencies and consulting parties and the public in 2018, and has held seven consulting party meetings to date. As such, staff recommends that the Commission commends GSA for fully engaging partner federal agencies and the Section 106 consulting parties through the evolution of the design process for the master plan amendment. Beginning in spring of 2018, GSA and the consulting parties evaluated the merits of three to six buildings of varying mass and height configurations, targeting the western edge of the plateau for location. As these discussions continue, GSA recognized the need for an additional building that's due to its specific programming requirements, needs to be located in this area, the Sweet Gun Lane Site. In these discussions, GSA also wanted to explore different opportunities to cite the new construction and to address the challenges from the topography, the slope and grading issues, as well as the flash -- fly ash deposits from the burning of coal over the years found on the campus indicated in these pink locations on the site. on the campus indicated in these pink locations on the site plan. And again, here is a ravine that we will talk about. In considering locations for the new constructions on the plateau, there was general agreement that the administration row buildings, again, these row here, were more significant than the historic pavilion buildings on the plateau that are scattered on this side, and that they should be retained and appropriately stabilized. Recognizing that planning and historic preservation concerns related to open space, historic views to and from the campus and impacts to the topographic bowl would need to be minimized and addressed, GSA looked at different models for the height and massing of the new buildings on the plateau. Again, once there was general agreement to target the western edge of the plateau for the new construction, GSA began exploring with the consulting parties and agencies the number of buildings for the new development, first looking at a scheme with three buildings, again, the ravine, this area here, moving to four buildings with one located on the south axis of the lawn. And here is the Hitchcock Building. And then with six buildings. The consensus was that a fewer number of tall buildings had a significant impact on views of the topographic bowl, while several shorter buildings had significant impacts on the openness of the views through the campus. Drawings also showed how different massing and height approaches impact the porosity of views towards the lawn. And here is a rendered image showing views of the topographic bowl with the massing of the preferred concept for the master plan amendment. As such, staff recommends that the Commission finds that GSA evaluated a range of design options with the federal agencies and consulting parties to address the needed square footage requirements for the new programming, with options ranging from two to six buildings of varying heights and masses located on the plateau while balancing historic preservation considerations. Based on these discussions and evaluations, staff notes that GSA arrived at a preferred massing concept for the amendment consisting of two buildings, approximately each 650,000 square feet, with one building embracing the slope of the ravine location to address the stabilization issues and incorporating the historic power plant buildings. Here is a rendering looking southwest on the plateau towards the new development. With the trees, is viewed from the historic Hitchcock Building. Here is a zoomed-in site plan showing one of the new buildings proposed engaged with the ravine. This is the new building. This is the historic power plant building. This location would allow GSA to address the slope stabilization issues with the siding of the new building. The ravine is envisioned to be transformed into a plaza space, allowing for a new pedestrian connection from this part of the west campus up to the plateau area via a pathway up the hill, while retaining much of the natural landscape feel as possible. Here is a rendering with a view towards the plateau, with this being the historic Hitchcock Building. And then a rendering looking towards the proposed ravine building and lower plaza with the historic smoke stacks of the power plant on the right of the image. As I mentioned, during the discussion with the agencies and the consulting parties, GSA also identified the need for a new 175,000-square-foot building, identifying a location to the north of the Coast Guard Building and up the hill from the historic cemetery. This is the location, the Sweet Gum Lane Site I mentioned. GSA has indicated this building will be largely underground with the above-ground components to mimic the design of the Coast Guard Building. Again. That was not me. Now I want to walk you through historic preservation considerations apparent from the concept of the master plan amendment. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, while the 2009 master plan attempted to balance the rehabilitation of historic buildings on the campus with new construction and would have resulted in the rehabilitation of 51 of the 62 historic buildings, the concept for the amendment proposes that 45 of the 62 historic buildings will be retained, rehabilitated, and then repurposed for DHS use. While the significant center building has been fully rehabilitated to serve as the Secretary of DHS's office, GSA discovered that many of the historic buildings were significantly structurally challenged and more deteriorated than previously understood. The historic buildings were also challenging to work with in terms of adapting the floor plates for new uses. Under the concept before you, five historic buildings will be demolished on the plateau area, while the historic buildings of the administration row and three additional historic buildings, including that ice house, the power plant, and the smoke stacks, will be retained. Thus, staff recommends that the Commission finds that while the proposed concept best balances program needs with historic preservation considerations, it has a greater impact on historic resources in the 2009 plan. As I mentioned, in considering locations for the new construction on the plateau, there was general agreement that the administration row buildings, again, up on this location of the plateau, framing the east side of the lawn, were more significant than the historic pavilion buildings scattered in this area of the plateau, and that they should be retained and appropriately stabilize in mothballed until GSA can identify future adaptive reuses and secure funding for rehabilitation. As such, staff recommends that the Commission notes that the concept plan now indicates that three historic buildings, 15, which is over by the Sweet Gum Site, Sweet Gum Lane Site, 66 and 69 are now proposed to be demolished that would have been retained under the current master plan. In addition, staff recommends that the Commission request that the applicant explore whether a small shift, if you can see on this overlay, the footprints for the proposed new construction are outlined in pink, but whether a small shift in the proposed building footprint of the new development could allow Building 66 to be retained while maintaining a cohesive and sensible site plan, and request that the applicant provide additional information on the rationale for demolishing Building 15, over here by Sweet Gum, and Building 69 on the plateau, as the concept plan does not show the footprints of the proposed new buildings directly impacting these buildings. In addition, staff recommends that the Commission request that the applicant follow the National Park Service guidance found in Preservation Brief 31 for the mothballing of historic buildings, for the stabilization of the remaining historic buildings, while demonstrating the commitment to identify future new uses for the buildings to encourage rehabilitation, and request that the applicant ensure that the historic buildings will not be demolished prior to the need to facilitate the construction of new buildings. Overall, staff recommends that the Commission finds that GSA's preferred massing concept best balances DHS's programmatic needs to consolidate its workforce at St. Elizabeth's West Campus with historic preservation considerations in the context of a national historic landmark district. The concept retains the historic administration row buildings on the plateau and the open character of the lawn. It retains the panoramic views and porosity of buildings across the lawn towards the Anacostia River from the administration row buildings. It locates two of the large new buildings on the plateau near locations previously approved for new construction, and it locates one of these new buildings along the slope of the ravine, allowing for the historic power plant and smoke towers to be retained and integrated into the new building while addressing the issues of slope stability. And it minimizes the impact of views towards the west campus, particularly on the ridgeline of the topographic bowl. Under this application for comments on the concept for the amendment to the master plan for St. Elizabeth's, GSA has provided a high-level components for the amendment, focusing on the approach for the siding of the new buildings on the west campus with strategies to minimize or mitigate mass and height. Staff expects GSA to work on other components of the plan as the amendment is more fully developed. And as such, staff recommends that the Commission request the following additional information with the draft submission for Commission review, including project phasing, proposed total heights for the new plateau buildings from grade, additional massing and options for the Sweet Gum Site building, including renderings to minimize view shed impacts, updated renderings of new development impacts to the topographic bowl and tree line, the proposed parking ratio and draft transportation management plan, tree removal and replacement plan, and stormwater and management plan. Staff also recommends that the Commission notes that a new memorandum of agreement will be executed to address agreed-upon mitigation strategies commensurate with adverse effects resulting from the master plan amendment, and notes that GSA plans to release a draft supplemental environmental impact statement in early 2020, and also notes that individual buildings and landscapes will be designed at the individual project stage and submitted for Commission review and approval. To conclude, as the Executive Director's recommendation for the Commission to comment favorably on the overall preferred approach presented in the concept master plan. I've already covered the rest of the recommendations, so I will now conclude my presentation. Kristi Tunstall-Williams, representing GSA, would like to say a few words, and both Kristi and members of their design team, as well as yours truly, are here to help answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Tunstall-Williams, and thank you, Mr. Webb, but I think Commissioner Wright would like to address, introduce...
Oh, yeah, well, you've already done my job. But before Kristi walks you down the more refined version of what's to come, I just want to say a couple of things about where we find ourselves in the middle of this very long journey. The consolidation imperative that has been... Let me rewind. The imperative for us right now is to complete consolidation, get a significant number of DHS employees on the campus, because the authorizing environment has said this shall happen before you get another dime for adaptive reuse. So the emphasis on new construction is solely and utterly a consequence of that directive. And we have been similarly transparent with the consulting parties, with whom we've met seven times. We're about to have the eighth meeting. As a reminder, for those of you who don't do this every day of your lives, the consulting parties and the review agencies, one of them being us, are the same. There's overlap between the two. The staffs of NCPC, CFA, SHIPO have been on board the entire time for all seven and now eight meetings, helping us to refine the plan. We're operating in a different environment now because we're designing even to a cost-per-square-foot number. This is extremely unusual. So Kristi's going to... Did we bring the funding slide? Yeah. Well, one of our favorite slides...
It's in our EDR.
It's not the only reason, but for those of you who've been around long enough, the plan, if you, even watching Lee's presentation, the plan, its evolution from 2008 is, if you're just dipping into our story now, seems pretty radical. But a lot of things have come to bear upon this master plan, and Kristi will explain the rest. It is, unfortunately for her, on many days, her primary job to try and get this thing done, and it's, we're now into, I don't know, 2006 was when it all started. So by the time we're finished, I expect both of us to have heads full of, fully white hair. Kristi?
Maybe I'll just catch up with Mina. So Mina and Lee have covered a lot of what I was going to talk about. Thank you, Lee, for the fulsome presentation. I think you'll recall that we were here in March. What you've seen is pretty much identical to then, and so I just wanted to kind of explain that. Part of it is what Mina said, that we had a directive from our authorizers to have a plan that showed that we could consolidate the headquarters on the campus by December of 2018. So that was when we initiated consultation, and working with the CPs, we got to this preferred plan. In that time, since then, we've been doing a lot of the due diligence that would have been running in tandem if we didn't have an insane schedule and expectation. So the NEPA EIS, we're doing a supplemental EIS to support the 2008, and then the supplemental that was done in 2012, to evaluate this new revised plan. That's underway. That should be coming out for review, I believe, in early 2020. And then we've also been doing the consultation. So where we are in the consulting party consultation, as Mina said and Lee said, we've had seven meetings to date. Early on, those were about the concept and shaping that. Now we have moved into looking at mitigation, identification of the adverse effects resulting from this plan, namely the demolition of buildings that we hadn't initially intended, as well as the mitigation and any minimization that we may do. So I'd like to acknowledge that the EDR is very reflective of what we've heard from our consulting parties. GSA is currently actively looking at the analysis and the documentation to respond to those comments, particularly as it relates to the three buildings that we've been asked to look more in-depth at. They are challenges. Some of it is use, some of it is cost, some of it is construction feasibility, but I don't want to be premature. We're going back to the CPs in a couple of weeks to present this, but those are kind of the things that we're spinning and trying to figure out, where do we have play? So I would say those are still unresolved. However, GSA is committed to ensuring that we don't do any demolition before we have full construction funding to build anything, because as we know, the whole world could change. We're not going to take them down until we have money to do that. We are also committed to, the buildings were mothballed when GSA took control of the site in mid-2000. We have been making repairs as needed, but we haven't done a comprehensive sort of reevaluation of that mothballing. So yes, we are committed to doing that. We've already raised that with our leadership as something we need to begin budgeting for. So with that said, I think that we really have been working very closely with your staff, as well as with the staff of the other review agencies and the private consulting parties that are including, you know, the D.C. Preservation League, Peter Saft at the National Historic Landmark Program, to come up with a plan that does balance preservation and new use. In addition to providing the new square footage to support the Coast Guard and the rest of the DHS headquarters, we also have been very sensitive about making a place. So yes, this is a national historic landmark. We're very aware of that. We're doing our best to preserve what we can. We also want to know that we are doing, we're inserting much more new construction than there was historic construction. And so we need to make sure that we're building a place that can blend those two, start to think about the spaces in between. I think internally, GSA, as well as the Commission of Fine Arts, commented favorably on the efforts around the ravine there, one to tie the preservation with the new construction, but also coming up with some creative ways to solve our slope challenges, as well as a major placemaking. That really becomes the knuckle of the campus. There's parking down below. People need to be able to get from the parking to the upper campus. There's currently not an accessible path. So we're also concerned with placemaking, making sure that this is a functioning campus, not just a collection of buildings. And with that, I don't have a whole lot of other remarks unless you have questions. I also have auto-conden here from ZGF, who has been the design architect on the master plan, to answer any questions that we can.
Thank you, Ms. Tunstall-Williams. I'm sure we have a few questions. So anyone want to start? Mr. May?
Might as well get it over with. So seeing this, I could not help but sort of rewind my entire life with St. Elizabeth's in my head, and I'm going to do my best to just suppress it.
The past is the past. That's a good plan.
She was speaking to you earlier. And it's not easy, but I am. So I will say that, you know, we have been fully engaged in the consulting party process, and I think it's a tremendously complex undertaking and many interested parties, and we understand all of the challenges that GSA is facing, well, maybe not all of the challenges, but many of the challenges that GSA is facing, in terms of what we have before us. Now, the plan of building two large new buildings, while it was not as, not what we, what this Commission approved back in 2008 and '09, it is, we understand why it's happening, and we understand that the process that you've gone through has yielded, I think, the best possible result, given the circumstances. I think we are... I think we are supportive of the notion of exploring the preservation of the three buildings that are, well, at least two of the three buildings that are affected. Maybe you want to bring that slide up?
Sure.
Yeah, so Building 69, we understand it's not because of footprint reasons, but because of proximity to the, that south wall, that that's a problem, but it would be nice if that building were, could remain. Building 66, I understand how problematic that would be, and it certainly would be funny if you just sort of shifted the large new building over a few feet so that you could preserve Building 66. It would be an awkward circumstance. Sweet gum, I don't, I mean, if there's a way for that building to be preserved, I think that we would be supportive of that. All that being said, I think our highest priority is not necessarily on those three buildings, or even the two buildings. It is that what remains that is historic be preserved and be repaired and retained and reused. And part of that is an immediate task of making sure that everything is being done to keep them from degrading any further. It's very, very disappointing to see the conditions that exist there now in some of these photographs. So whatever can be done to see that that happens and that there be a commitment to preserve them, and hopefully ultimately to reuse them, I think would be the most important thing from our perspective. And I'm just gonna try to keep suppressing my memories.
Two things I neglected to mention. We have also been working with DHS to identify uses for these buildings, and just this morning, I said, I'm gonna get up there and say this, so you gotta agree with me. My counterpart at DHS said, we have more program than we need to fill these buildings. The challenge is, we've just got to get the funding. And so from GSA's perspective, we need to get the new construction done and out of the way so that we can circle back to the adaptive reuse. But we do have a commitment from our tenant, which has not always been the case, to go into these buildings. If we can get them retrofitted, then they are willing to go in. The other thing that we talked about with staff is, before we come in for the draft, one of the most challenging things about this site is the different topography changes, getting a tour for you all in advance of seeing the draft. So we'll work with the staff to do that in the spring, in advance of bringing the draft in, so, sorry.
Yeah. You're reading my mind on that one, yes. Anyone else wanna, I have some things, but I'll defer for Commissioner Cash.
So I just want to be clear. So Admin Row, those buildings which are historic and need to be essentially refurbished, that's on hold until this can get, until these two new buildings can get done?
Correct.
Is there any kind of stabilization work or anything going on to kind of stop the rocks? I mean, the last time I was in them was about 10 years ago, and I'm surprised I'm still standing here.
So they're currently, they're currently mothballed. The buildings obviously have been vacant for a long time. They also, the initial construction had some challenges. We've got like three-end structural slabs and things in there that will have to be overcome. But if it were me, and I believe DHS believes this, as well as our agency, that the first priority for adaptive reuse, once the funds shake free, is Admin Row. They are very prominent. They're very handsome buildings. And what has happened, and what we predicted would happen, is now that the secretary is on campus in the center building, A, they realize it's not so bad to be in this historic building, but they're all, everyone wants to be there now. So people are interested in coming. They look at these buildings. They're very handsome buildings. And so while I don't control the purse strings, as soon as, we are continuing to advocate for that, and any support that the commission can provide in that effort is welcome.
I mean, I'll just say, I mean, like I said, I was out there a long time ago, and it was kind of neat to see GSA was very excited at the time, and look at all this we're gonna do, look at these great views, we're gonna have this great community engagement, and it's, it seems like now we're at the point where we just need to get this, pass this next step so that we can fulfill even a portion of that original vision. So I mean, to that extent, I think the historic preservation concerns are real, but I mean, in this case, especially the buildings that now have to come down, I think it might be slightly outweighed by this kind of, I mean, not necessarily hostage-taking, but if we need to get these buildings done to avoid any more neglect, I think that it's unbalanced, what, 13, 14 years later, it's probably something that we can live with before we lose any of these other structures, so.
And the slide that Mina was referring to about appropriations, which I think you said was in the EDR, it's that we've received only 43% of the funds we've requested for the campus to date, and that continues. That's what it's looking like for '20. We won't get what we requested. So yes, point taken.
Well, can I say one more thing on that? I do want to commend GSA's. I mean, back in my previous role, when I worked on the Hill and was on one of the authorizing committees, I mean, it was very frustrating at the time, too, because just even the funding would throw the sequencing of these things off, and it pushed to delay and ultimately added more funding. So I understand that's a big frustration. I think that GSA's actually done a great job dealing with the constraints that they're put on. I mean, this is a really big project that has a lot of different competing interests, but I will say, I think that you guys have done the best you can under some tough circumstances.
I think that what we've been focused on in this, on this last amendment, is, given our marching orders, is really trying to carefully balance what to fight for, to preserve, and what role it plays in the new design. The landscape, can you go to the Landscape Plaza, please?
Yes.
The ravine is a very real, for those of you who've been out there, it's a, I don't know, 40-foot drop, something like that. And it's pretty sudden and severe, and it would cost a ton. I think I remember something on the order of $20 million to stabilize the slope with caissons. We're stabilizing the slope with a building, and in so, a new building, and in so doing, creating a new focal point for the campus, a programmable space for the tenants, and saving the power plant and stacks. In some of the iterations, the power plant was scheduled to go, not the stacks, but the, because they are landmarks, but the power plant, and, which is a shame, because it's a, pretty much a shell of a building that we can use for lots of things. So we're trying very hard to, given the focus on new construction, to be sensitive with what we save, and so Peter's point about 66 is, I agree with him. It's not, I've been saying to people, it's not like a settee that you just move around your living room. There are, there are major implications. The topography and the cost are, we've answered the mail on those two not insignificant issues with this building, and in creating, in inciting it there, hopefully you'll be creating, yes, we recognize that we've, that it, Buildings 66 and 60 pay the price for it, but if you think in a balanced way about new design and what are you saving the buildings for, we feel like we're very close. 69 is another story altogether. I mean, so to me, 66 is, we'll look at it again. We feel like we've sort of exhausted that look, but we'll look at it again. 69, I think, is going to come down to money, because it's going to, it would require hardening. So, and that's not an insignificant bill to pay.
There's a 100-foot setback required by DHS security requirements, and that sits right squarely inside of it. The Admin Row building, the ends kind of touch it, so there probably would be some hardening, but it's not as, to the extent that 69 would require. The other comment about 66, in addition to just the strange juxtaposition of a mammoth building next to this little one, is a construction access. We heard from the CPs, as Mina said, early on, the ravine building actually took out the power plant at the bottom, and we heard from the SHIPO and others that that was actually much more important to the reading of the site as a self-contained campus and it kind of the industrial nature. So what happens is, how do we build that building? If you've got, if 64 is very important, which is the little kind of T-shaped one, kind of as a bridge from the historic campus into this modern area, and then the power plant is important as a vestige of this self-contained campus, if we save 66, we can't really access that site to stabilize the slope. So that's the biggest, from the comments that we've heard from the CPs, there's been a lot of coalescing around 66, but it's really the most problematic of them, because it creates construction challenges as well as design challenges.
And one more thing about 64. Lee, can you point to 64?
The T building.
Up above the, there we go. 64 in plan does not look that significant, but on the ground, it really holds the axis between Hitchcock, can you put your, there you go. Hitchcock and 69, although imperfectly, on the ground are experienced as on axis. And 64 really does its job holding, holding that axis as well, much more so on the ground than in plan. When we first started looking at which ones could we afford to let go, I think we quickly, we, meaning the CPs and GSA, quickly arrived at 64 as something we need to save.
So you're stealing my thunder a little bit there.
I'm sorry.
No, thank you. But I'm gonna jump in, and I'll defer and then come back on some other points. But, you know, from an urban design standpoint, I feel like Building 69 is something that we should try very hard to keep, because of everything that Commissioner Wright just spoke about, that axis, and that's why I'm very anxious to go see this and see it, experience it on the ground. But that linkage and that lawn that Mr. Webb continued to emphasize over and over again must be absolutely fabulous and a really important, and will be dramatically changed if 69 were to disappear. I understand the force protection requirements, and we were just in a building today where they're gonna go, you know, do a lot to harden the building, and we, it's not a small matter. But I think significantly, in terms of the historic lawn, as well as the buildings that contain the lawn, 69 is really doing a lot of work to line, to line that up. I want to just speak to 64 just a little bit, the T building there. Thank you for saving that building. I don't know what it looks like, but in plan, I agree with, again, Commissioner Wright's eloquent description of its work in sort of connecting to the historic part of the campus and sort of containing that space. I am a little concerned, and I know this is more of a design issue, but the ravine building, which by the way, I think is gonna be fabulous, I think it's a really, gonna be a wonderfully important transition for this campus in a way that will really have a significant impact on the positive direction of where the campus, how it will live and work and play in that environment. I am a little concerned about how it connects or relates to 64. I'm ready to give up on 66, you know, but 64, you know, there's, what that corner is, just the top right corner of the new ravine building right there, yeah, to the right, yeah, to the right, yeah, right there. That, and how it lines up with the middle of the administrative, administration buildings, sort of on axis in that way, puts a great burden on the design of that building and its presence, and not to overwhelm 64, but to also kind of build on the connectivity between that corner and the administrative buildings that are centered on that, on that axis. So it's really a design problem later that we need to address, but hopefully we can do that. Let me see.
And to that point, for the commissioners that don't, we'll be back in with the designs of each of these buildings as they develop. We also consult them all with our consulting parties as the design moves forward.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Cash?
Actually, going back to 69, so I mean, I understand the security concerns, and, but I mean, I think the framing is an important aspect of that that you talk about. I mean, you have the parade grounds there, and I mean, has there been any thought in the planning, and this might be weighed in the future, but maybe to kind of like reserve that spot as like a memorial element or something like that? Because in going through the documents, I mean, I saw the Second Division Memorial, like you'd envision maybe something like that that doesn't have the same kind of hardening-
In lieu of the building or the building-
Right, and maybe in lieu of, so if that goes away, but eventually, if you want to kind of, kind of bring back the framing idea of it, I mean, is that an opportunity in the future for something else, just to kind of restore that frame on the parade grounds?
I think that's an interesting consideration. It hadn't been raised, but there is, there's another element of our programmatic agreement for this campus that included a museum. That's challenging for a variety of reasons, so it's gonna have to be a joint use with something else, but even DHS has suggested, well, when we heard from the consulting parties, as well as the EDR, that that was a really important building, that that might be an appropriate location for that. So we are actively considering options for that building. Again, everything comes down to cost, but I don't, I think that of the, of the three is probably the most likely that we'll see that.
We are committed to all, we will not, demolition will not happen until we're ready to dig. And in my 10 years working on this plan, a lot, a lot can change before we get down to that end of the site.
Well, can I speak to that for a second?
Yeah.
Because I want to send, I think, an important message. You know, here we are, 10 years plus, working on a master plan and modifying it, okay, respectfully, and, you know, economics have been, you know, an important consideration here, and we can't dismiss that. But what we don't want to hear, and I probably won't be on the commission, but you're young enough that maybe you'll come back and remember this, that we don't want to bait and switch on the administration buildings. What would keep you from coming back in 10 years and saying, oh, well, gee, now we have our new buildings, and Congress won't fund renovation of these historic buildings, so let's tear them down? And, you know, it's not that different than what we're doing here today. I know there is a difference, and the program is driving it, but please, if we're gonna, if we're gonna cement this plan as a final master plan, let's realize the master plan and not come back in 10 years after we've all been moved on with fresh, with new memories, thinking, oh, they forgot. So some of our staff is young enough, they'll be around to remember. Thank you.
Point taken.
Mr. Chairman, speaking about longevity, so I'm gonna do my best. This Building 69, I've had a constant concern that there's not a place that I know of, maybe, that there is easy access to the public and for presentations and briefings. And I know that when we go into Coast Guard, we have to go through a lot of security stuff to get community in or folks in. And it's always my thought that it'd be great if they had a place that wasn't so hardened, that people could come to and get briefed, because it's gonna be, hopefully, I pray, that there will never be a need to bring particular attention to this agency, but Homeland Security could become very hot with stuff going on, where you may want to call people in, press, the community, whoever, to brief, or others, to brief them on what's going on with the proper presentations. And I don't know how accessible that building is. Maybe it isn't. That line off MLK doesn't seem to be a-
That there is a gate right there, that currently at the opposite end is Hitchcock Hall, which is a theater. It's an old vaudeville theater. It's actually in the process, under construction right now. I think substantial completion for maybe December, which is envisioned to provide that sort of opportunity for the community. It will still require some level of security, just because it is within the Level 5 campus, but DHS is actually thinking through how, what that looks like. What does the community have to do if they want to use that building?
And I'm not really just speaking about community use. I'm thinking about opportunities when you want to bring the media in, others in-
Oh, right, and so that building is prepared for that.
... give a presentation that doesn't have to require all the security that they go through, because it's a, you understand, I think we're focused on it.
There is also, in the, in the earlier iteration of the master plan, a visitor center that, whose fate is rather uncertain at this moment, because we haven't, this is up by Home and Relief, and, Lee, can you move the dot over to behind Hitchcock?
Where the parking garage is.
Up in there, that right, right there is where a visitor center is planned, and to be honest, it's been a long time since we've, we've looked at that. I was really hoping to try and knock that thing out, because it looks, the design looks like a Pizza Hut. So whether or not we are gonna revisit the need for the program, I'm sure we will, because a lot has changed since then. But that was part of the idea for its location, and it was near a gate where it was gonna be easier to access. There was parking right next door, and da-da-da-da.
But anytime you get within the, within the parameter of the structure of this area, there's security requirements.
Yes, correct.
I mean, we used to use, Bolden Air Force Base was used a lot for a lot of activities, but now you gotta have social security numbers, you gotta ID people, you gotta create lists, which gets to be very awkward, particularly if you want easy flow, not just community people, but a person.
Whoever, visitors and guests, yeah.
A presentation quickly. So I think the point's made and you guys are trying so, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I will try to stay along, as long as I can, to help remember this for you, Mr. Chairman, just in case.
Thank you, you're the man, I'm counting on it. Okay, any other comments? Let's try to move this along. I think we've hopefully given very valuable feedback that you can take back. And we look forward to a site visit and your draft plan in the spring, sounds like.
Great, yeah.
Right.
I believe, that's right, Mark, EIS in the spring?
Wonderful. All right, is there a motion to accept the EDR with comments?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of this EDR, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much for the information and the hard work. Okay. The former agenda item six E is approval of comments on the concept plans for the Monumental Core Streetscape Project. A tiny little project that NCP's been involved with. No, absolutely the opposite. I do want to recognize the significant work of NCPC staff and many other district and federal agency partners on this important guidance document that will have a long-term impact on the character and legacy of this area and this city. So with that, Ms. Dowker will make the presentation.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. NCPC is pleased to present the Monumental Core Streetscape Project, Urban Design Streetscape Framework and Lighting Policy for Concept Review. In the past, we've come to you with separate information presentations on these two topics. Today, we're presenting both together since they are related. The term Monumental Core describes a broad area, but this project's focus is the National Mall in vicinity, which is the symbolic center of the capital city. Intended to guide the improvement of streets in this area, the Streetscape Manual was first created in 1992 when the Secretary of Transportation initiated the inter-agency initiative for the National Mall Road Improvement Program. Since 1992, the manual has provided guidelines for coordinated and consistent streetscape treatment. The manual was developed and managed by a working group that included the parties and endorsers shown here. The manual consists of details and specifications that coordinate construction within the boundary, shown in the dashed black line. In a twenty-year span, the manual achieved great outcomes, guiding over twenty-five road construction projects in this area. This coordination is important for developing streetscape consistency because several jurisdictions come together here. The working group manual also identified the need to update the over twenty-five-year-old manual. Within Washington's Monumental Core, streetscapes reinforce its unique civic role as the nation's capital and create a welcoming and livable environment for people. Therefore, the Monumental Core is a place where the details really matter and its streetscapes should meet elevated standards. To scope the manual update, staff completed an assessment of streetscape planning documents and existing conditions, and some good and poor examples are shown here. The issues are summarized as a lack of streetscape guidance, particularly at a level that connects those construction details with a broader vision and a lack of thorough manual application, administration, and coordination. Last year, staff presented the scope of work to our commission and CFA, which includes four products. First, the Urban Design Streetscape Framework and Lighting Policy, which you're seeing today. Second, design guidelines. Third, a construction manual. And fourth, an update to the memorandum of understanding, which will improve working group coordination. Together, these documents will form the new Streetscape Guide. The guide is not a capital improvement program. It will provide guidance during project development and review with the goal of developing streetscape consistency through incremental change. As part of the update, we've discussed adjustments to the 1992 boundary. This diagram illustrates that boundary. Last year, we discussed including the Kennedy Center, Banneker Park, and Judiciary Square. After further consultation with agencies and stakeholders, we're recommending the addition of Kennedy Center and Banneker Park. We're not recommending the addition of Judiciary Square because there are many properties under district jurisdiction there. Adding the Kennedy Center will help achieve the goals of the Monumental Core Framework Plan, which proposed strengthening the linkages between President Kennedy's living memorial, the White House, and National Mall. NCPC met with Kennedy Center staff, who expressed interest in being included within the boundary and would like to coordinate the boundary adjustment with their current master planning efforts. This will be resolved before the next review. Adding Banneker Park will help achieve the goals of the Monumental Core Framework Plan and the Southwest Eco-District Plan, which include reinforcing Banneker as a gateway between the National Mall and Southwest Waterfront. In response to the changing conditions here, future streetscape enhancements could strengthen the gateway experience and reinforce these linkages. Next, I'll discuss the Urban Design Streetscape Framework, which includes street categories, character areas, streetscape elements, and gateways, thresholds, and approaches. And I'll walk through each of these one by one. So first, I'll start with street categories. These organize Monumental Core streets according to their national and local identity and spatial and visual relationships to nationally significant monuments, memorials, buildings, or open spaces. The categories include radiating and edging streets, shown in magenta, connecting and traversing streets in light pink, and local streets in white. I'll note that some of these streets connect to parks and other destinations outside of the 1992 manual boundary, shown in dashed gray here. We are working closely with the District Office of Planning and the District Department of Transportation to study these areas and determine how to coordinate federal and local guidance. To further describe the street categories, radiating and edging streets have national importance and symbolic meaning and radiate from or edge nationally significant structures and open spaces. Connecting and traversing streets have national and local importance and symbolic meaning and connect multiple nationally significant destinations. Local streets are the orthogonal grid streets that support and highlight the radiating diagonal avenues. Character areas are the second component. These describe the unique land use, urban design, architectural, and landscape character within each precinct or neighborhood. There are eleven character areas shown in different colors on this map. Within the gray areas, there are many neighborhoods with their own unique streetscape character that we want to respect. Together, these areas represent distinguishable patterns in the built environment, not jurisdictional boundaries. Here's an example from the U.S. Capitol complex, showing the legislative precinct with the U.S. Capitol Building in the foreground and some images of unique streetscape details noticeable to pedestrians. Next, I'll discuss streetscape elements. This shows various elements within the streetscape and many of these are included in the 1992 manual. Streetscape elements are often interconnected by their function, such as landscape elements that work together to manage stormwater. However, for this framework, we're focused on the visual role of the streetscape elements. For this reason, we've categorized them into vertical, surface, and small-scale elements and organized them along a spectrum of consistency. Vertical elements, such as the streetlights and trees, shape consistent streetscape corridors and frame vistas and view sheds. Surface elements, such as pedestrian walking space and pavement material, inform streetscape character. Small-scale elements, such as benches and trashcans, may have more variability to distinguish character areas and neighborhoods. The Streetscape Framework synthesizes these various components. This composite shows the relationship between the street categories and character areas. Again, the character areas form the backdrop to the streetscapes and influence the pedestrian experience. Lastly, I'll discuss gateways, thresholds, and approaches, which articulate the sense of arrival along the streetscape. Capitol gateways are shown in orange, consistent with the urban design elements demarcation of gateways or entries to the Monumental Core. Transitional thresholds are shown in light orange arrows at important entries into or between the character areas or neighborhoods. And to address CFA's June comments, staff added axial approaches, which are shown in the dark orange arrows at important entries into the Monumental Core. To do this, staff coordinated our work with DCOP and looked at a broader city context. Generally, locations for the axial approaches were informed by major corridors leading into the Monumental Core from the LaFonte City and District Boundaries. Here are examples of the Capitol Gateway to Union Station from Columbus Circle, which signals entry into the nation's capital. The transitional threshold to the Smithsonian Museum from Tenth Street, which reinforces transition and aids wayfinding to the Castle Entry. And the axial approach to the National Mall from Virginia Avenue, which reinforces continuity and supports open views along the corridor. So in summary, this Urban Design Streetscape Framework will be used to develop guidelines and construction details in the next phases of work. It is also the foundation for the lighting policy. So for the next part of our presentation, I'll discuss the lighting policy and framework. Today, we're presenting a conceptual framework. This will inform streetlight specifications, which we're beginning to develop and will review with the public in 2020 prior to commission review. It is important that we develop this conceptual framework now because the city is advancing the smart street lighting project. The project, led by DDOT and the Office of Public Private Partnerships, or OP-3, will convert all 75,000 of the city's streetlights from high-pressure sodium to LED. Federal-local collaboration is important in the Monumental Core because of the adjacency of multiple jurisdictions. Here, four streetlight owners come together. This diagram shows streetlight ownership with DDOT in red, Park Service in green, Smithsonian in yellow, and AOC in blue. Street lighting is also an important part of the overall appearance of light in the capital city. Lighting contributes to our city's visual image, identity, and atmosphere, as well as safety and security. This nighttime image of the Capitol Building and Washington Monument shows how light is currently working. The darker, softer landscapes elevate the form and visual prominence of our civic structures, which are illuminated in white light. This aerial shows current differences in the color of city lights. You see the visual contrast of the city's yellow-orange high-pressure sodium streetlights and the Monumental Core's white metal halide street and building lights. So today, the color of the Monumental Core stands out from the rest of the city. We can imagine that when the city converts all of their streetlights to LED, everything will be a warm white light. Since the contrast in streetlight color will no longer be there, the lighting will become more homogeneous and it will be more important to focus on the Monumental Core's building and open space lighting to add variation and character. Considering these changes and the need for new guidance, the lighting policy and framework is a policy-level document that identifies elements that are important to consider for nighttime illumination of the capital city because of their symbolic importance and visual prominence. It also establishes a hierarchy for these elements and outlines general lighting principles. Before we got started, we looked at the approach that other capital cities are taking for their lighting plans, which really range in level of detail. We looked at London's lighting plan, Ottawa's Capitol Illumination Plan, and Canberra's lighting policy. The work that we're doing is policy-level, similar to Canberra. We are building on the Streetscape Framework, which we just walked through. We're also considering changing lighting technology. The city's moving away from the high-pressure sodium lights. The federal partners are moving away from the metal halide lights and everyone is moving towards the energy-efficient LED. We're building off Washington's historic fixtures and prior lighting plans. These historic fixtures, which you see on the left, were designed by CFA commissioners and include the Washington Globe, designed in 1910, and the Twin Twenty, designed in 1923. We're also building off the 1977 and '87 PADC lighting plans, which use light to highlight important structures, as well as CFA's 1992 conceptual lighting plan that proposed using white light to highlight the LaFonte and MacMillan plans. We're building on federal and local policies. There are several policy statements that specifically address lighting and our new parks and open space element recently added more. And in collaboration with the working group, we've established these goals for the lighting guidance. First, to create a clear lighting hierarchy that respects and protects the symbolic meaning and nighttime appearance of iconic structures, landscapes, and streets. Second, to recognize the nighttime appearance of the existing urban context that surrounds this area. Third, to address contemporary street lighting issues, so namely, that change to LED. And fourth, to build upon the capital city's historic lighting plans by carrying forward important lighting principles. First, to establish a lighting hierarchy, we identified criteria for each tier, one through three. The criteria relate to symbolic meaning and visual and spatial prominence. So this is not a ranking, but rather helps to differentiate lighting treatments. Some examples of each tier are shown here. Next, we've assigned a tier to each of the following elements addressed by the lighting framework, which includes structures, landscapes, and streetscapes. And I'll walk through each of these elements to explain the current policies that we're building off of, the proposed tiers, and lighting principles. So I'll start with structures. We currently have lighting policies that state that the Washington Monument and Capitol and other memorials are most visually prominent at night. We've expanded on this and categorized these structures into tiers, which you can see on the map. Again, the tiers are organized by symbolic importance and visual prominence. They do not indicate the level of brightness. But the principles here are that buildings should have a clear lighting hierarchy and their nighttime appearances should convey their symbolic meaning. Just for this lighting framework, we expanded our context to include important structures like San Elizabeth, Frederick Douglass House, and the National Cathedral. While the framework does not dictate how property managers should use lighting, it does outline the principle that architectural lighting should enhance buildings while also protecting the night sky. Washington, DC is a city of white light, which is important to conveying a timeless image, dignity, and respect. These aspects of white light are important for our national spaces, which often have commemorative, celebratory, and ceremonial uses. While other cities are trending towards using colored light, the principle here is that white light is important to the capital city's identity and the harmony amongst its civic structures. Almost all permanent lighting for important civic structures is white. However, to display and celebrate art or special events, some buildings use colored light displays or projections on a temporary basis, so for several weeks or days. Considering these existing lighting conditions, some stakeholders have advocated for a white light policy. This draft builds upon existing policies and agreements and could be incorporated into the next Urban Design Element Update. This policy applies only to federal buildings and states that white light is important to highlight and harmonize among civic structures, celebrating their significance. The policy also supports the use of colored light and projections on a temporary basis. Next, I'll discuss landscapes. We currently have lighting policies that support maintaining the dimness of the Monumental Core parks and minimizing light pollution. We've expanded on current policies and categorized landscapes into tiers. And the principles here are that National Mall lighting should accentuate iconic civic structures and LaFonte planned parks and open spaces should be highlighted by perimeter street lighting to convey their role in the city framework. Landscapes are further subcategorized by their settings to indicate their role as nationally significant open space, natural or waterfront space, urban or residential space. Each setting has special considerations for light, either requiring brightness for visibility and safety or requiring dimness to protect the environment or historic character. So the principles here are that lighting in urban settings should be brighter and lighting in the other settings should be dimmer. Lastly, I'll discuss streetscapes. The city has policies that support street lighting to highlight road function and wayfinding. The streetscape lighting tiers build upon the Urban Design Streetscape Framework and the principle of creating consistent corridors to support the visual prominence of vista focal points. Again, we are coordinating closely with DCOP and DDOT to study areas outside of the boundary and to determine how to coordinate federal and local guidance. When addressing street lighting and nighttime visual character, there are several technical topics that are important to consider. These include uplight, color temperature, and brightness. I've worked to simplify these very technical topics and I'll walk through each one. So first, uplight. So first, uplight. From this image, you can see that D.C. is illuminated more brightly than the neighboring counties in Maryland and Virginia. To the right, you can actually make out the district's boundary. This is because of differences in uplight standards and fixture types. Too much uplight is particularly a concern for the mission of the U.S. Naval Observatory, which requires dark skies for their telescope to see the stars and planets. Uplight describes the amount of light shining upward. To protect the night sky, zero uplight is desirable and achieved with a full cutoff fixture. However, this is very hard to do with our historic Washington Globes. In the past, the Streetscape Manual specified that 15% of light should shine upward to illuminate the globe silhouette, and 85% of light should shine down to illuminate the ground plane. In our next steps, we will begin to address changes to federal L E D streetlining standards, and will determine an appropriate L E D uplight or bug rating, which stands for backlight, uplight, and glare, that balances historic preservation with night sky protection. Once we further develop these federal L E D standards, we will host a public meeting before returning to the commission for review. Next is color temperature. This describes the visual warmness or coolness of light. It's measured in Kelvins. Higher Kelvin numbers equate to a bluer light, and lower Kelvin numbers equate to a warmer light. Differences in color temperature are noticeable to the naked eye. This image shows Los Angeles's L E D streetlight retrofits. You're seeing old high-pressure sodium in the background and new L E D lighting in the foreground. L E Ds first hit the market at about 5,000 Kelvin, but as technology evolves, are now at 2,700 Kelvin and lower, which is better for human and environmental health. However, these lower color temperatures are more difficult and expensive to manufacture. We are considering 3,000 Kelvin on most federal streets and 2,700 Kelvin near federal waterfronts, natural areas, and pedestrian paths. Overall, this would lower federal color temperature standards by roughly 200 degrees Kelvin. This diagram illustrates C F A's 1992 plan, which had a vision for streetlight color temperature that was grounded in historic preservation and urban design. White light visually distinguished Monumental Core streets and LaFonte Radial and Axial Streets and reservations from the urban street grid. When the city converts streets, excuse me, streetlights to L E D, it is going to significantly change the streetlight color and character in Monumental Core. There will be much more warm white light. Federal objectives are to consider urban design, historic preservation, the environment, and safety, and to maintain at least some streetlight color distinction to highlight nationally important areas. And we are working with the city to balance both local and federal objectives. The other topic is brightness. This is more intuitive and refers to the amount of light emitted from the bulb. Like landscapes, we've organized streetscapes into different settings, and the principles here are that urban areas should be brighter and can highlight the plan for the city of Washington, and the other settings should be dimmer. Furthermore, the 1977 and 87 P A D C lighting plans focused on adjusting the brightness of both street and building lighting, which work together to highlight focal points like the U.S. Capitol Building and other important civic buildings. Applying that same logic, we've identified streets with reciprocal radiating and edging vistas to significant illuminated structures, and streets that cross important view sheds. The principles here are that streetlight brightness should elevate and enhance views to these structures, and we should continue to protect the National Mall's view sheds. To achieve this, we'll need to further evaluate streetlight brightness and dimness, and it's our understanding that we can work with D dot on dimming the lights on these streets in the future to balance urban design, historic preservation, environmental, and safety considerations. So looking at our scope of work, we've completed item number one, the Streetscape Framework and Lighting Policy. We plan to host a public meeting on the framework and will consider public input as we develop the guidelines. We're currently beginning work on the federal L E D streetlight specifications, which will present at a public meeting before bringing to the commission for review, and we're working with stakeholders to extend and update the M O U. The next steps are to start our work on the Streetscape Guidelines. So in conclusion, it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission comments favorably on the urban design Streetscape Framework and Lighting Policy. The full recommendation is in your packet. I'll just note that we've received a number of letters from city residents regarding technical aspects of L E D street lighting, and I believe we have a resident here to speak. Again, today's presentation was on the conceptual lighting framework. This will inform the streetlight specifications, which we're beginning to develop and will review with the public prior to coming back to the commission. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Ms. Beagle-Dowker. This is really a layered and hierarchical framework approach that you really presented very coherently. Not a simple thing to do, very well organized, and really appreciate the work to make this something that is rational and understandable and hierarchical in its nature. I think we're going to see benefits from this work for decades to come, so thank you for that. I think we, as was noted, we have received a number of letters on this item. Those were distributed earlier and are also at our place on the dais. Ms. Dolores Bouchong has signed up to speak on this item, and I'd like to invite Ms. Bouchong up to the podium. Ms. Bouchong, you have three minutes to provide your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Dolores Bouchong, and I am here to talk about the lighting policy. I want to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity, and thank you especially. I really appreciate it. I've been researching this issue of L E D lighting for three years after they put up L E D lighting on my street. And I'm also a current member of the mayor's streetlight advisory panel. We meet with D D O T monthly. I am, however, representing only myself today. I do want to make that clear. I've provided you with written testimony. There are two documents that were attached. One is from the United States Naval Observatory, because they presented to us, and the other is an article that was from Flagstaff, Arizona, which I think is particularly pertinent. I would really like to see you add to the goals to reduce light pollution in Washington, D.C. That is, it is a significant issue. We have a lot of wasted light. And that would start with taking a look at how important those Washington Globes are, because right now, what they're doing is sending light up into our dark skies. I really want to let you know, I know you've read what the U S N O is saying, but it's not just that they have telescopes and are looking at the heavenly bodies. They determine our G P S settings. This is important if you want to get a cup of coffee at Starbucks, or if we're talking about trying to take out a terrorist. It's incredibly important, and they have asked us specifically, when they met with us, to lower the light in Washington, D.C. I am very impressed that the C F A has said that there should be a lighting designer hired to begin this process. It is something that I have been saying to D D O T in our monthly meetings, so I'm really, really glad it's going to be hopefully collaborative. I would encourage you that D D O T and when you work with them, that you look for certain things in acquiring a lighting designer, however. It should be someone who's really worked with conversions to L E D lighting, that they would look at human health, because there are huge impacts, particularly with L E D lighting. There are negative impacts, which have been researched and shown on animals, including birds, insects, particularly pollinators, as well as plants. We all have melatonin, for example. With no darkness, plants have a problem with that. Sky glow, I've already talked about that with the U.S. Naval Observatory. Changing technology. Flagstaff also has an observatory, and they're using some L E D solutions that have not been considered here in Washington, D.C. So I hope that a lighting designer would take a look at that and contact Flagstaff, talk to the head of their observatory there, as well as the traffic engineer, who is trying out some other solutions. I really want to thank you all for allowing me to testify.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bouchong. All right, I'd like to open up for any comments or questions. Commissioner Cash.
So one thing I noticed didn't seem to be addressed in here more on the Streetscape and looking at the street furniture and all that, is no kind of conception of the five G poles that we've been talking about as well. Is that, if we keep moving on that eventually, because I know that we're, that the commission's working with partners on design goals, I guess, I don't know what we exactly want to call them, but I mean, would something like that be integrated into this kind of by reference? I mean, once we get to that point, or I mean, is that just maybe they get merged together the next, the next time that we look at the urban design guidelines again?
Right. So it's our understanding that the small cell pole design is on a separate, I mean, it's handled separately, a different project, but once it's complete and once the design has been resolved, it would be incorporated into the Streetscape Guide.
Commissioner Trueblood.
Thank you, and thank you for presenting this. I know the district has worked with you, and the Office of Planning has enjoyed working with N C P C to think about how we can look beyond just the Monumental Core and really extend these out. So thank you, and I know there's some Office of Planning staff here. Chris Shaheen is here in support. I think I have a comment on the Streetscape, and then I have a comment on, or a question, I guess, on the lighting. You know, my comment on the Streetscape is, you know, I'm really happy to see Kennedy Center added. I also don't think the Streetscape in front of Kennedy Center is a Streetscape. And now, you know, beyond the, beyond this particular project, I just want to put that out there, that ideally sometime we could actually think about that as a Streetscape and not a spaghetti of highways. And, you know, I guess on the same, I think this is also beyond the scope, but maybe it's a question. You know, Pennsylvania Avenue, what is that, east of Third, is also kind of a street parking scape? So is that part of this, or is that kind of outside of the scope of this work?
We have identified that area. It's something, you know, and I know there's been a lot of conversation also with the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative on that, but we are coordinating with A O C.
That's great. Yeah, I think there's opportunity there as we think about Streetscapes and making, you know, creating our streets for our residents, for our visitors, for our workers, and not necessarily for private car storage. So then, the final piece, I guess, I have, is about the Washington Globes. And I think, you know, I wonder, I, well, here's my, my question is, are we sort of accepting that 15% uplighting as the standard in this document?
So it's really our goal to find the best balance between historic preservation and environmental protection, as well as protecting our night skies. So we are open to reconsidering that 15% and lowering it.
I guess, you know, for me, I think it's, you know, I think there's an opportunity maybe to really, to think about that, and, you know, that those globes were not designed with any idea of kind of environmental impact in mind. And I guess the only two things that I was thinking about in that respect is, sort of as with the five G, might there be a technical or a design answer to that? Or maybe less technical or design, or is, might there be a hierarchy? Might there be places where, sort of, as you do with the brightness, where those globes are illuminated, where there is a national significance, but in other areas where it's a different hierarchy, that maybe it wouldn't have to be 15% or illuminated at all? I would, I guess, just from my personal perspective, I would probably fall on the side of less illumination. You know, I think they are prominent, whether that 15% illumination for that little tip and for the historic significance outweighs broader needs. I don't, I'm not sure I see that. Thank you.
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cash.
Actually, as long as Commissioner Trueblood mentioned the cars, that actually reminded me of the, some of the problems down there near the Capitol, where there's been some interconnectivity of the bike lanes that has been proposed, and that's one of the hurdles, is a lot of the cars there in Pennsylvania. But that got me thinking with, now that we are including Banneker in here, has there ever been any thought about maybe including some design standards for bike lanes, considering that we have a lot of different technologies coming? Because I know that down at Banneker, D dot has actually just installed some new quick bike lane things to keep the buses out of there. They can zip in and install in like 10 minutes, but they're very different kind of design-wise than the ones going down Pennsylvania Avenue or up 15th Street. So as we see kind of this proliferation of bike lanes, is that something maybe to think about going forward, too, that we are having some consistency of design in the different parts of the city, especially given that we already have different designs, even in the core itself?
Yes, that is on our list of items to tackle in the design guidelines phase. And as you mentioned, there are different standards at different jurisdictions, and we want to see something more seamless.
Scooters, bikes, you know, all of this. Yeah. Yes, Mr. Dixon.
I feel like I could comment on this pollution, but not only the light pollution that was mentioned by the citizen, but also sign pollution, which I know is not in your, in your, you know, many years ago, you couldn't have signs the size they are in D.C. now. You couldn't have these lit billboards that were lit up. I mean, I like the technology, but that gets to be polluted, too. The lights, particularly when you have areas like Seventh Street and in Chinatown, I mean, they got these huge things on the buildings. And, I mean, sometimes I kind of like them, but it's really a shift from where we were many years ago. And this sign on the, what is the heating plant for the Senate, when you come down to 95, it's like the whole building is a, is a, is a Apple advertisement.
Oh, the Apple ad, yeah.
And I'm saying, we, is Verizon? I mean, you know, I don't know whether we can do anything about that, but it's a real departure from where we were many years ago, and maybe that's, I don't know, maybe that's progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I just want to thank Ms. Bouchong for your commitment to this issue. It's extraordinary, and we do appreciate your feedback and input here, particularly with regard to light pollution, but also you raise human health as an important aspect of this that I think we could all stand to learn a lot more about and also understand how this affects the way we feel, the way we experience each other and our community. So thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes. Commissioner Argo.
Yeah. My understanding is that there have been some blocks, some neighborhoods in Washington, D.C., where they have had L E D lights installed in the streetlights. Is that, is that correct? I mean, there are not many, as I understand it. It would be interesting, just, I'd like to know where they are, just personally. I actually know where one is in the Spring Valley.
I'm happy to answer, but there's one in Volta Place in Georgetown, right off of Wisconsin. Also, Nebraska Avenue near American University is another where they've installed a corridor.
Exactly. Anyway, if it would be, it would be helpful to, I would like to have that information if we can get it sent to the commissioners, so we can experience some of those. I mean, I know where the one is, up by, by American, but to see, I think it would be interesting to see the difference between some of the residential streets where this lighting has gone in. And I'd like to see it in another part of the city, like at Volta, wherever. If we could just find out where those are, that would be helpful.
Okay. Commissioner Trueblood.
I apologize for coming back, but just on the thought on the globes, I do, kind of, to Commissioner Argo's point, maybe if we could see what it looks like, you know, through either a rendering or even, even better, a photograph, or in person in some way for the globes in the 85-15, I think that would be really helpful.
Yes, Mr. Cash.
Actually, as long as Commissioner Trueblood brought it back to the globes. So I think it would also be interesting, too, to, when we're looking at the guidelines, it seems like there's been a lot of ad hoc fixes to the globes in several different places, spray paint half of it, or maybe there's a way that we can maybe give some consistent guidance, that there's some mitigation within the current globes, maybe if it's a bulb that doesn't project upwards, or maybe an actual design guideline to put something on the inside of it, so that it doesn't look so bad but still preserves it. But I think that there's a lot of examples around the city of kind of self-mitigation by neighboring homeowners, and maybe if we had a more consistent, accepted design model, that would be a little bit better than homeowners getting their ladder and spray painting themselves. But I think that that's something to think about, because if there's not an elegant solution, people will come up with their own.
Could have a, like a second job climbing poles to paint. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Commissioner White, did you have a comment?
I just have a question based on Ms. Bouchong's testimony, and maybe you can help me understand it. It says the second issue that was raised in the meeting was N C P C's choice of 3,000 Kelvin lights in the Monumental Core, and that more than 116,000 residents voted on resolutions through their A and Cs to limit streetlights to 27K, or 2,700K. And then that was also supported by U S N O. So can you just help me understand the distinction there and why would we be different than U S N O and that recommendation?
Sure. So again, we're trying Sure. Sure. So, again, we're trying to balance safety, environment, and coordination with the district. So, we know that the district right now, and this could change, but right now they're looking at 3,000 Kelvin for arterials, and they're looking at 2,700 Kelvin on local and collector roads. So, we're trying to coordinate our guidance, so we don't hit different color temperatures when we cross different jurisdictional lines. But it, I mean, it's something that, I mean, the federal partners, I think, would be open to considering lowering those temperatures, especially for environmental causes.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think, thank you for the feedback. Thanks for the hard work. Is there a motion to approve comments on this significant body of work for concept master plan amendments for the Monumental Core Streetscape Project?
So, vote.
And seconded? Someone? Seconded. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Great work. Thank you. Okay. I think we have one last agenda item, definitely last but not least, is Agenda Item 7A, which is an information presentation on the I-495 and I-270 managed lane studies, which will be provided by the Maryland Department of Transportation. I think Mr. Wile will introduce that to us.
Yes. Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the commission. Staff from the Maryland State Highway Administration are here today to report back about their analysis of the Maryland 200 alternative, which was proposed by NCPC staff as a way to potentially satisfy managed lane study goals without using Capra-Crampton Parkland for expanding, expanding the I-495 Beltway. The study is co-led by the Maryland State Highway Administration, as well as the United States Federal Highway Administration, which, with NCPC participation as a cooperating agency, to ensure that the future NEPA document will provide the kind of data and level of analysis that our commission would need for future action on potential Capra-Crampton park development. In that case, the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission would submit any future park development projects to our commission for review as the formal applicant. As a reminder, Maryland SHA is looking at potential widening alternatives to effectively accommodate future traffic growth along the Maryland side of the I-495 Beltway and southern seg, segment of I-270, which is shown here in red. The widened Beltway would accommodate managed lanes, or lanes that use tolling, access control, and other operational strategies to regulate their use. Some local examples include the high occupancy toll, or hot lanes in Virginia, and the intercounty connector in Maryland, which connects I-95 and I-270. Since July, Maryland SHA has analyzed a traffic diversion concept as the Maryland 2, known as the Maryland 200 alternative, which would divert traffic to the intercounty connector from the Beltway, thereby potentially reducing northern Beltway travel demand and eliminating the need to construct managed lanes between I-95 and 270. SHA has modeled the alternative and analyzed its performance against the other EIS alternatives that are being retained for detailed study, or also known as ARDS. There are several identified federal interests related to the study, with the most significant, from NCPC's perspective, being the use of Capra-Crampton land for future capital Beltway widening within Rock Creek, Sligo Creek, and Northwest Branch Stream Valley Parks. Per the Capra-Crampton Act, NCPC must review and approve all Capra-Crampton park development. In accordance with a memorandum of understanding between NCPC and the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, Capra-Crampton land is, is to only be used for park-related purposes, such as trail access, stormwater management, and recreational uses. NCPC's authority requires the commission to protect this land and to allow non-park uses only if it has been determined that no feasible alternative exists. These next few slides will help the commission get a sense of what each Capra-Crampton park looks like today, near the Beltway, where future impacts may occur. Starting in the Northwest Branch Park, here are two ground views, looking to the northwest on the left, and looking directly north toward the I-495 Beltway Bridge in the right-hand photo. The park is characterized by relatively steep forested slopes that descend down to the Northwest Branch Stream, with the Northwest Branch Trail lined along the eastern slope above. Approximately two miles to the west is Sligo Creek Stream Valley Park, which encompasses the historic Sligo Creek Parkway and Sligo Creek Trail, both of which crossed beneath the Beltway near where these photos were taken. As you can see, the character of the park is much more suburban compared with Northwest Branch, with relatively level topography. And finally, here are some ground view photos in Rock Creek Park along Beach Drive, looking towards the Beltway, in two locations that could potentially experience significant visual and user experience impacts based on proximity to the Beltway. However, Maryland SHA staff will report out on several parks where they have been able to reduce the project's potential impact areas. In addition to Capra-Crampton property, Beltway expansion may also require land from a number of federal properties, including NSA Bethesda, Beltsville Agricultural Research Center, Joint Base Andrews, and a number of National Park Service properties. The extent of impact to each property is understood at only a conceptual level at this point, and these areas will be further refined and evaluated through the upcoming EIS and Section 4S analyses. All changes to federal property would require NCPC review per the National Capital Planning Act. Finally, the commission also has a broader interest in improving the overall transportation network for the National Capital Region, with increasing multimodal connectivity, adding transit, pedestrian, and bicycle facilities, and encouraging more efficient travel behavior by federal employees. Here's a list of previous commissioner comments from July, with the key request to analyze the Maryland 200 alternative as proposed by NCPC staff. In follow-up to that meeting, staff drafted and sent a letter with the comments to SHA and the Federal Highway Administration for additional consideration, and now SHA is back to provide their responses, share the results of their Maryland 200 analysis, and highlight additional study developments since the summer. So, with that, I would now like to turn the presentation over to Lisa Choplin, who serves as the project director for the I-495, 270P3 project office. Lisa?
Thank you, and good afternoon. My name is Lisa Choplin, and I am the I-495 and I-270P3 Program Director for the Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration. With me today are Jeff Folden, our Deputy Director, as well as Karen Brookman, our Environmental Manager, and both of them will speak this afternoon. We are pleased to be here today to provide you with a follow-up on comments that we received during the July 11th commission presentation, as well as your August 12th follow-up letter, including directing motorists to use the ICC Maryland 200 through dynamic signing on I-95, documenting transportation modeling processes to convey benefits of the Purple Line and CCT, as well as others, accommodating the regional travel growth through multimodal approaches, and transparency of how the Transit Working Group influences planning decisions. One of the main comments received from NCPC was to analyze an alternative that completely avoided the use of Capra-Crampton-funded Parkland, to assist NCPC in meeting its NEPA obligations under the Capra-Crampton Act. To address this comment, we developed and analyzed the Maryland 200 diversion alternative over a three-month period. We'll discuss the results of this analysis as part of our presentation. We will also discuss the Federal Highway Administration and MSHA's decision to drop Alternative 5 from further analysis, as it was deemed not to be a reasonable alternative based on the traffic and financial analyses. As we move forward with the reasonable range of alternatives, MSHA has been working to continue to refine the alternatives by incorporating avoidance and minimization measures where feasible. We will discuss these measures later in the presentation, specifically for the Capra-Crampton-funded parks within the study area. And then finally, we will discuss the schedule and next steps. After our July meeting, we reached out to the Maryland Transportation Authority, they are the agency that runs and owns the ICC, to determine the ability to provide real-time travel information as travelers approach the corridor from the north along I-95 and from the south on I-495, and provide them with a choi, provide travelers with a choice between taking I-495 or the ICC. The authority is currently evaluating this request in their engineering department, and we will continue to work closely with them in moving this forward. And I recently reached out to them to ask for an update, as well as hopefully a schedule of when they will have that determination for us. In developing the traffic model for the P3 program, MSHA used the National Capital Region Transportation Planning Board, MWCOG model, to forecast traffic in 2040, which is the regionally-accepted model. We followed the typical process for all major state transportation projects by using the regionally-accepted model to develop traffic volumes, and then using these volumes to determine the traffic performance for the no-build, as well as each of the build alternatives. The 2040 MWCOG model assumes all projects in the constrained long-range plan. These projects are assumed to be in place under the no-build scenario, and were assumed in the model for all the build alternatives. The 2040 land use on their approved development plans and future master plans come from each of the counties, and this was used in the model. As the MWCOG model has been updated for 2045, our 2040 traffic analysis will be updated to include 2045 using the recently-approved model, and will include additional transportation projects listed on the slide. The National Capital Region's Transportation Planning Board recognized that it will take all modes of transportation collectively to significantly improve performance on the region's transportation system. Expansion of the express highway network is one of those seven aspirational goals or initiatives, as defined in the TPB, to address the transportation issues within the National Capital Region. There is already a substantial commitment to funding of transit in the National Capital Region, approximately 66, 66% compared to 34% for highways. Visualized 2045 recognized the need for a balanced approach to solve the region's congestion challenges. The I-495 and I-270 program will address those challenges through providing additional capacity on new managed lanes. There is currently very limited bus transit service on I-495 due to the existing congestion. Managed lanes provide the opportunity for faster, more reliable bus trips with reduced travel times by ensuring a minimum of 45 mile an hour trip. Additionally, there may be opportunities for new express routes between Maryland and Virginia, for example, reinstating the express lane, sorry, express bus service between Tyson's Corner and Bethesda, a transit service that was deactivated years ago because of low ridership. A managed lane system could also support service to suburb, suburb-to-suburb transit markets currently underserved by providing reliable and fast bus trips on the interstates, while connecting the service to existing bus services on the local roadway network through direct access connections. National experience shows that managed lanes can be beneficial to public transit. This has been realized most recently in Georgia, Atlanta's Northwest Corridor Express lanes, where riders on Georgia's express bus have seen trip times reduced by 15 minutes. And traffic in the general-purpose lanes are moving approximately 10 to 15 miles an hour faster at peak period, and congestion has been reduced by nearly an hour. High occupancy toll, car, and van pools, and travel demand management systems are all complementary to managed lanes. High occupancy vehicles can realize free or reduced tolls, increased corridor person throughput will be realized. Managed lanes can support emerging transportation-related technology. For example, the newly-developed multimodal trip planner application called Inceptrip, which uses real-time data to suggest the best mode for commuter use within the National Capital Region. The goal of this application is to incentivize commuters to choose more fuel-efficient travel choices, including HOV, ride-sharing transit, and et cetera. A system of managed lanes could support this technology by encouraging HOV and transit travel through the use of high occupancy toll lanes and bus transit. To further support our purpose and need of accommodating existing and planned multimodal mobility and connectivity, we are proposing multiple direct and indirect access from the managed lanes to existing transit stations and planned transit-oriented development, as shown on the map. We have coordinated these direct access locations with the counties, including Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and Maryland National, which led to additional direct access, shown in orange, to support employment, land use, and transit centers. As mentioned back in July, we have established a transit work group, which meets on a monthly basis, working collaboratively, collaboratively within the transit agencies in, in and around the region, identifying opportunities for new, expanded, or modified transit service that can be accommodated by using the proposed managed lane systems. Expected outcomes include identifying park and ride lot needs, identifying existing constraints to service, and recommended new or modified access to transit. And what we're doing currently in that working group is, each agency has, transit agency has evaluated their existing service, as well as looking at opportunities for expanded service that could potentially be addressed through the managed lane system. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Jeff Folden. Again, Jeff is our Deputy Director, and Jeff is going to talk about the Maryland 200 analysis.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. The development of the Maryland 200 diversion alternative was completed in an effort to be responsive to agency comments and concerns about evaluating an alternative that avoided sensitive resources along the top side of the Capitol Beltway. Before this alternative's analysis started, we coordinated with NCPC, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, and the Prince George's County and Montgomery County Departments of Transportation on the scope of that analysis. So, we took a hard look at this Maryland 200 diversion analysis over a three-month period, using multiple engineering teams, and compared it to the same level of detail that we did the screened alternatives, that we presented previously to this commission. The analysis was done to determine if that Maryland 200 diversion alternative met the transportation purpose and need of the managed lane study, and should be carried forward as a reasonable alternative in the draft environmental impact statement. So, I want to take a minute to talk about the transportation purpose and need of the 495 and 270 managed lane study. This study is looking to address the significant congestion that travelers on and near 495 and 270 face today, and will continue to see in the future, as the region continues to grow. I'm sure you're well aware that the population increase in the region by 2045 is expected to increase by 1.2 million. That's 23% increase. And the number of jobs is projected to increase by 1 million. That's a 29% increase. Our study is looking to provide a more reliable trip and additional travel choices in the region for travelers as it continues to grow. This includes enhancing existing and planned multimodal mobility and connectivity. Enhancements would include improving or providing connections for bicycles and pedestrian facilities where 495 and 270 may be a barrier. Also, as noted by Lisa earlier, there are significant enhancements for transit with managed lanes, through renewed improved opportunities and access for more reliable transit serving the region. Simply stated, transit and roads are bridged by managed lanes. This will bridge the gap, and it will also incentivize public policies such as ride-sharing and transit usage. Also, we're looking to improve the movement of goods and services through the region, to ensure our economy can continue to grow as needed. And also, finally, the purpose and need, we're looking at one of the primary functions of the interstate system, which is homeland security. Improvements to 495 and 270 would provide the ability to improve access for first responders, and to evacuate people in the event of emergency. So, but getting back to the ICC diversion alternative, this graphic shows travel routes that may potentially be diverted from the top side of the Capitol Beltway to the ICC. I'd like to take a minute to go through a couple of examples. The first route in green would be traffic traveling between the 95 corridor north of the ICC, and then going across the American Legion Bridge in Northern Virginia. Traffic coming down 95 to the Capitol Beltway accounts for about 15% of the traffic in the peak period. This traffic, traffic utilizing the ICC to reach Northern Virginia would increase a person's travel distance by about 10 miles, or about 50%. And the next route in blue would be traffic traveling along the outer loop of the Beltway in Prince George's County, traveling toward Northern Virginia, across the American Legion Bridge. And this is about 6% of the westbound traffic on the top side of the Beltway. And if traffic coming from Prince George's County were to utilize the ICC diversion alternative, it would increase a person's it would increase a person's trip by nineteen miles, which is two and a half times the distance they would travel today. So bottom line here is either movement requires a significant distance added to a person's Now you've seen the movements the ICC diversion alternative may accommodate, I want to explain what the alternative assumes. The Maryland 200 diversion alternative is similar to Alternative 9, which considers adding two hot lanes in each direction on the entire Capitol Beltway and I-270 in the study area. However, instead of two hot lanes on the top side of the Capitol Beltway, the ICC diversion alternative is looking at providing transportation systems management solutions such as ramp metering and signal optimization with no widening to the Capitol Beltway to improve traffic flow. The ICC diversion alternative also proposes to connect, as shown in blue, the managed lanes considered on the east side of the Beltway to the intercounty connector along I-95. Next slide. So as previously mentioned, the Maryland 200 diversion alternative was analyzed to the same level of detail as the screened alternatives, and included an evaluation of the same traffic metrics used to screen the other alternatives. Based on the results, the Maryland 200 diversion alternative performed the lowest or second-lowest in all but one metric. Now I just want to take a few minutes to go through some of the metrics. The 200 diversion alternative creates a new bottleneck on the top side of the Beltway, just east of the I-270 spur, particularly during the AM morning rush hour, because extra traffic reaches this non-widen section faster. This new bottleneck is not created under any of the other alternatives that have a complete system across the top side of the Beltway. This bottleneck causes significant impacts to the overall system by increasing travel times and contributing to the reduction of moving people across the American Legion Bridge. Under the ICC diversion alternative, our modeling shows that the increase in person throughput across the American Legion Bridge is less than half of that than under the other alternatives that have the same footprint. So simply stated, not providing managed lanes on the top side of the Beltway has a direct negative effect to moving traffic between I-270 and the American Legion Bridge. Now I wanted to highlight some travel times that are significantly impacted under the ICC diversion alternative. So a person living in Silver Spring near US-29 who might work over northern Virginia, their trip home in the evening would double and increase by nearly a half hour under the ICC diversion alternative. For a person who lives in Bethesda and works over near US-50, their home, their trip home in the evening would increase by more than two and a half times. This will cost people many hours a week and time, precious time they could spend with their families and doing other things that they enjoy. So I've talked some of the negatives about what we've seen from the analysis of the ICC diversion, but we did see a positive. Due to the additional lanes on I-95, we saw some benefit to the north-south roadways in Prince George's County. These new lanes on I-95 would pull traffic off local roads such as US-1 and Maryland's 650 and improve travel times on those routes. So those were positives. However, we didn't see the same positives on other places, such as Montgomery County. The east-west traffic routes on Montgomery County, traffic is not pulled off those, and traffic is, congestion is extremely severe. However, the biggest impact under the ICC diversion alternative is the local network in the district. It will see significantly more hours of delay on the district's roadways since traffic that would prefer to use the Capitol Beltway would be forced to find alternative routes going through the city. Next slide. There's also an environmental cost to the ICC diversion alternative. With no capacity improvements on the top side of the Capitol Beltway, significant congestion will remain, which means more idling, more stop-and-go traffic, causing higher emissions near parks and stream valleys. Studies have shown that traffic moving slower puts off more emissions than traffic that's moving at higher speeds, between thirty-five and sixty-five miles per hour. There are two main reasons why the ICC diversion alternative would lead to significant congestion noted in the previous slides. It does not address some of the worst bottlenecks in, on the highways in Maryland, and the ICC cannot accommodate the traffic to provide the relief. So the top side of I-495 from 95 to 270 carries the second-highest volume of traffic in the state of Maryland of any roadway, and that's the highest volume of any section of a highway on the Capitol Beltway. Due to the high traffic volumes, the top side of the Beltway also contains some of the most unreliable segments. The outer loop from 95 to US-29 is the most congested freeway segment in Maryland in the morning peak. It's a distinction it's had since before the ICC even opened. This congested section also has three of the most unreliable freeway segments in Maryland, making trips extremely unpredictable and unreliable on a day-to-day basis. The inner loop from 270 to 97 is the third-most congested segment in the PM peak. The ICC diversion alternative fails to address these significant bottlenecks and does not address the congestion or meet the purpose and need of our study. So why won't the ICC be able to handle more traffic in the future? So the ICC was designed for 2030 to allow free-flow traffic in 2030. After the ICC opened and travelers started to see the benefits, we've seen traffic projections reached as the ICC continues to grow. It's functioning today as intended, when it was planned, and what we expect is it will be at capacity by 2030. In fact, certain sections would be at capacity by 2027, and these sections are the westbound sections in the morning peak periods. So what that means is the ICC is limited in the morning peak period to accommodate traffic from the Capitol Beltway, because that's its most congested time and the Capitol Beltway's most congested time. In general, though, there is a decrease in environmental impacts due to the ICC diversion alternative because of the lack of managed lanes on the top side of the Beltway. But there are new impacts associated with the I-95 managed lanes improvements. The ICC diversion alternative does avoid the park properties along the Capitol Beltway on the top side, but there are thirty-five other parks that would still be impacted throughout the rest of the study area. So in summary, the 200 diversion alternative does not meet the purpose and need of the managed lane studies. It does not address the long-term traffic growth projected in the region. It doesn't enhance trip reliability, and it doesn't improve the movement of goods and services through the region. We took an extremely hard look at this alternative and completed analysis to the same level we did to all of their alternatives we are recommending to carry forward in the draft environmental impact statement. While we're not recommending to carry the diversion alternative into the DEIS, it will be considered as part of the least overall harm analysis in the Section 4F analysis, and that will be part appended to the DEIS. So that concludes our analysis on the ICC diversion alternative. I'm going to turn it to Karen Brookman now to talk about Alternative 5.
Thanks, Jeff. So I want to take the next few minutes to talk about and update on the alternatives retained for detailed study, or the ARDS as we call it, specifically Alternative 5. So Alternative 5 consisted of adding one high occupancy toll lane, or hot lane, on I-495, and converting the existing high occupancy vehicle lane on I-270 to a hot lane. Alternative 5 was one of the seven recommended ARDS that we presented to the agencies and the public last spring. The traffic analysis that was performed on the screened alternatives showed that Alternative 5 performed the worst in all traffic metrics. In addition, a single-lane system would be constrained by the slowest-moving vehicle, we call that the snail effect, which would result in less reliability and less flexibility to adapt to incidents than a two-lane system would. Maryland's traditional funding source, including the Transportation Trust Fund, which funds maintenance operations as well as capital projects for all modes, are unable to effectively finance, construct, operate, and maintain improvements of this magnitude that we're talking about for the managed lane system, over forty-eight miles of improvements. And this is due to fiscal constraints of the program as well as other statewide transportation needs. Additional financial analysis showed that Alternative 5 is not financially viable as it would require a substantial payment by the state. This would impact the ability to fund existing and planned transportation improvements over the next twenty years. Based on this information, review of the traffic analysis as well as the financial analysis, Alternative 5 is no longer considered a reasonable alternative and will be dismissed from further consideration in the draft environmental impact statement. So I want to talk about the alternatives briefly that we have retained. These alternatives will go in the draft environmental impact statement. The alternatives mostly consist of two-lane managed lane systems, either high occupancy toll or express toll lane systems. I do want to mention that federal regulations prohibit us from converting an existing HOV lane to an express toll lane. We can, however, convert it to a high occupancy toll lane. And the reason why I'm mentioning this is on I-270, there is an existing HOV lane. So some of the alternatives retain that existing HOV where we are adding an express toll lane or converting that existing HOV lane to a high occupancy toll lane. And again, that's only on I-270. Alternatives 13B and 13C consist of reversible lane network. Again, that is only on I-270. So this graphic only shows the typical sections on I-495. Alternatives 8, 10, and 13C are express toll lane networks on I-495, and Alternative 9 and 13B are high occupancy managed lanes on I-495. So the team was challenged from the very beginning to avoid and reduce environmental and property impacts. Over the last few months, we've further evaluated the alternatives retained for detailed study. We've looked at direct-access locations and continued our coordination with regulatory and resource agencies to really refine the limit of disturbance for the alternatives. We have been able to successfully incorporate avoidance and minimization measures, and these include adding retaining walls, modifying direct-access locations, modifying direct, or modifying ramp designs, and slightly shifting the alignment of I-495, as well as providing underground stormwater facilities. Overall, there has been a reduction in right-of-way, Section 4F properties, wetlands, and floodplains, among other resources. So I'm going to take the next few minutes to talk through measures that we have incorporated into the alternatives to further reduce impacts specifically at the Capra-Crampton parks. So first, I want to talk about the minimization efforts for Rock Creek Park. We focused in two areas, considered the upstream area near Cedar Lane, and that is the top right, and the downstream area near Jones Mill Road, the bottom left. An interdisciplinary team consisting of stormwater and natural-cultural resource staff, as well as staff from Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, and the permitting agencies, including Maryland Department of Environment and the Corps of Engineers, took a look at ways that we could reduce impacts to Rock Creek itself as well as the park. The results included slightly shifting I-495 toward the inner loop and including retaining walls on both sides of I-495. This effort eliminated the need to relocate Rock Creek, and that significantly reduced the amount of impacts to both the stream as well as the park itself. The reduction to the park is roughly ten acres, just actually shy of eleven acres, and we were able to avoid relocation of Rock Creek, which saved almost thirty-three hundred linear feet of stream impacts. Now that we've looked at minimization efforts, we're going to shift our focus on mitigation of those impacts that are unavoidable, and this, of course, will be a collaborative effort with Maryland National as well as National Capital Park and Planning Commission, National Capital Planning Commission. Next slide. So this just shows a visual of what I just explained. The yellow line indicates the previous limit of disturbance, and the pink line indicates what our current limit of disturbance is. And that shaded area is the area of Rock Creek that we have been able to successfully Next, I want to talk through Sligo Creek and Northwest Dream Valley Parks. Again, we were able to incorporate minimization efforts, and this was through the addition of retaining walls along both sides of I-495. The total permanent impact for Sligo Creek is estimated at roughly 2.6 acres along the entire length of I-495. And I will point out in the next slide, there is a section where we are proposing a stormwater management facility, and that's roughly, that accounts for one acre of that 2.6. Northwest Branch, the bridge over Northwest Branch, and if you recall in the very beginning slide that Mike showed, the bridge is extremely high. It's almost a hundred feet in the air, and so construction of this bridge is going to be very challenging. Right now, we are proposing roughly 3.2 acre of impact. However, the majority of that is for construction, so that will be considered temporary. So the permanent impact is roughly .3 acre for Northwest Branch. I do want to point out, it's important to note that the Northwest Branch Bridge will need to be replaced. It was original to the Capitol Beltway, so regardless of the I-495-I-270 project, it is nearing its useful life and would have to be replaced regardless. So again, this is a visual of what I just described. The top right is Northwest Dream Valley Park, and you can see the pink is our current limit of disturbance, and it is bumped out to the south, and that is to account for the construction access. I will say there is a more environmentally sensitive area to the north, and we were able to avoid that by moving the construction to the south. So in summary, we heard you, and we've taken action. Over the last several months, we've tried to address your comments, which have resulted in additional coordination and extensive analysis. So as Lisa mentioned, we have been actively working with the Maryland Transportation Authority to increase the use of Maryland 200 through dynamic signing. We will continue to provide updates on that as that moves forward. We've also looked at transit opportunities through the Transit Working Group, and that is an effort that will continue, and we hope to incorporate some of those transit and HOV elements into the alternatives retained, of course, to encourage and support non-SOV travel. We also took a hard look at the Maryland 200 diversion alternative over a three-month period to determine whether it was reasonable to be carried forward. And as I just mentioned, we have been able to successfully incorporate a lot of park minimization measures into our design to significantly reduce impacts to Capra-Crampton-funded So next steps, we are continuing to look at avoidance and minimization measures, and this is a collaborative effort with all of the resource agencies that we work with. Again, areas where we are unable to avoid impacts, we're going to talk through mitigation. We are developing the draft environmental impact statement as well as the draft Section 4F evaluation. We will be identifying the recommended preferred alternative and seeking concurrence on that from the cooperating agencies. That preferred alternative will be going into the draft environmental impact statement. We will be publishing the DEIS and Section 4F evaluation this spring, this coming spring, and holding a series of public meetings after publication. So on behalf of M.D.S.H.A. team, I want to thank you all for allowing us to present today and open it up for questions.
And also, just really quickly, in terms of next steps for NCPC staff, we are analyzing whether there is enough information with regard to impacts across all of the alternatives for the commission to meet its NEPA responsibility should the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission submit the project in the future. And we will relay our, this analysis to M.DOT. So that concludes our presentation, and we are now available for questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Chaplin, Mr. Folden, and Ms. Brookman. We do appreciate the work that you've done to try to respond to our questions from your last visit with us. I think that maybe this has raised some additional questions, and we probably have a few more things we'd like to send you back with to look at. So I'll open up for questions or comments. Anyone want to get started?
Chairman.
Mr. Dixon.
I think that we are, I guess we are trying to mitigate bad behavior, but necessary behavior, lots of cars, and few people in them, which is a problem, I guess. Now, having said that, realize there's probably nothing we can do about that. I don't know. The snail issue you raised, given this movement towards driverless cars and other things, that's going to create a lot of snails that you don't, we don't know about yet, but I'm thinking they're coming if this thing moves forward with the driverless cars, because they're going to be right at the speed limit, if not lower. I don't know how it will work. I just mentioned that as a possibility. I don't know the, I'm sure you thought about that. A lot of snails on the highway, more. The other thing is, I notice I have an electric vehicle, partially electric anyhow, and the HOV lanes, I thought were, let you come in with those, which is maybe good, good behavior. But I don't, all HOV lanes don't allow electric vehicles on them, and that's maybe a question that you can speak to. I'm sure these little things may not change. The other issue I want to raise is, have we ever thought about going up rather than out? Elevation of anything in the system so it can, we can offer another lane that we can go, I mean, like on George Washington Bridge, they couldn't go out, it wouldn't work. So they had to go under or over to create more, more access, more, more, more room. So if you could put in patch areas, I mean, areas that were critical, maybe some elevated space for certain kinds of vehicles or whatever, then you could eliminate, we could still encourage the use of cars more by allowing more, I think the more highways you have, the more space you got, the more cars you're going to have, but that's, no. So those are three issues I just raised, as just thoughts.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'm going to ask Jeff to address the HOV, but when it comes to the up versus out, that is one of the things that we looked at fairly early on. We, I'll use the American Legion Bridge as an example, and you mentioned the George Washington Bridge. We, I'll use the American Legion Bridge as an example, and you mentioned the George Washington Bridge in New York City. So that has been evaluated. ALB is a little bit different because of the topography, it becomes very cost prohibitive, as well as other geometric issues. But other parts of the Capitol Beltway, the challenge there is, even by going up, either by trying to build it or the foundations for the structure, you end up going out. So you really don't save the space going, going down, but that's not to say that there may not be places where that could happen. So I'm not ruling that out. I'm just saying in general terms, it's not really viable. Going down, you are all probably very well aware of all the things that run underneath the ground in, oh, I'm sorry, okay. So yeah, but those are opportunities that will be further evaluated as the design is developed, but a holistic approach to that just isn't feasible, but there may be opportunities in certain sections. Jeff?
You asked about HOVs and using, sorry, electric vehicles using HOV lanes. That is, there is a law in Maryland that does allow for that. So I don't believe that, we do give out stickers for those, and I, yeah, I don't know if it's done in DC or Virginia, but it is a law in Maryland. So currently in Maryland, if you go to the Motor Vehicle Administration, get a sticker, you can ride in the HOV lanes on 270 or US-50 for free. I don't believe that's a law in DC. I don't know the, I don't know the DC law, to be quite honest with you. I think the other question was autonomous vehicles. So one thing we do see is, and we've seen this in other states where they're using these managed lanes to test and for these autonomous vehicles, because obviously transportation's going to change in the future. We can't predict 100%. But what we do see is these managed lanes being very adaptable and to those autonomous vehicles, and because it's going to take probably just numbers, I'm guessing here, I've seen different projections, but 20, 40 to 50 before autonomous vehicles really take hold, probably at 75%. So there'll have to be ways to separate those drivers who maybe are going to make human error versus those autonomous vehicles that will do, you know, follow the rules of the road as they should be done.
So Mr. Folden, on that issue, pardon me? Oh, on that issue, so that isn't part of your modeling at this point, your MW COG model for autonomous vehicles, not incorporated?
No, not to my knowledge. It's not incorporating the current model.
Okay, thank you.
We actually have one of our traffic engineers, so he can, he is very well versed in autonomous vehicles.
Okay, please state your name, and thank you.
My name is Matt Snare. I'm with the MSHA project team, working on the traffic analysis. And yes, this question has come up a lot, whether and how to incorporate autonomous vehicles in the future, driverless cars into the network. There's a lot of research going on. MSHA is involved in a lot of committees and so forth, looking at the research, looking at the trends, trying to predict what will be out there in the future. And where we stand right now is there's just too many unknowns to really incorporate that into the modeling. So the COG modeling that we have now does assume still predominantly driver vehicles, but we have designed this to be adaptive to potential future changes. As Jeff was mentioning, the managed lanes, because it's a controlled environment, is actually quite suited for future autonomous vehicles. And there could be a situation in the future where those lanes are used by autonomous vehicles, and they're allowed in the lanes. But as far as the projections, they're based on vehicles. There's some research that says there'll be less vehicle miles traveled in the future once there's autonomous vehicles. There's some that says there'll be more. So right now, you know, there's a lot of, some of the research says there'll be a lot of empty vehicles as they're going to pick up the next person, so it could actually lead to more vehicle miles on the road. So there's a lot of unknowns, and so for now, we're sticking with the traditional forecasting method.
Commissioner Cash.
Thanks so much. So in looking at this, I think that we talked a lot at our last information presentation on this, and I tend to focus on just talking about expansion of roads and all that in general, distaste. But I think that looking here, we asked you to go back and look at an alternative that we wanted to look at. And like I've said before, I'm not a planner, I'm not anything like that, I'm a legislator. So in looking at NEPA, I decided to pull up the law and ask, what's the point of NEPA? Why did Congress feel it important to pass this law? As promote efforts which will prevent or eliminate damage to the environment. In your slideshow about the alternative, I think that you did a great analysis over three months, but you spent eight slides talking to us about the impacts on traffic and how long people will sit around. You've spent one slide talking to us about the environmental impact, and I think that, I think it was Slide 24, that slide actually said, there will be almost no impact to the environment if you go on that alternative, and that there will be 42 linear feet of additional paving, I think that you said. So with all that said, I think that it would be a shame to not still take that alternative forward and put that into the draft EIS, because all of the other alternatives we're talking about, which is probably going to save us the most transportation time and which is going to put less emissions into the air, even though I think that this country's on a trajectory to go towards electric vehicles, and the emissions discussion will be very different in the future. So I think that we're getting to a point where we can't just wave our hands and say the emissions are the environmental impact, because we have a situation before us where this, this specific land that Congress thought was so important that it had to go through NCPC for review, and you're just throwing away the alternative that would remove that impact altogether. I think it's just, it's a little bit frustrating that we're not going to see that going forward. So I just wanted to put that out there, that I think that I really encourage you to come back and look at that. And if, even if it's a foregone conclusion, you're not going to put it out there, at least include it in the full EIS process. This was the point of NEPA, and to throw this away just because it won't fit the program, essentially, I think it's just, it's a little disappointing.
And if I could just add to that before you respond, Ms. Brookman, you know, I think that when we look at the remaining alternatives, essentially, all of them are really the same build impact in terms of environmental impact. And so that's where I think we're disappointed, that both the Maryland 200 analysis, which we do appreciate you looking into, and also the single lane option have been dismissed. So essentially, the EIS process seems to want to move forward with the same basic picture in terms of environmental impact, which is really what this group's role is in this whole thing as we see it going forward. Thank you.
Can I respond?
Please.
I appreciate that comment. I would say, you know, this is a transportation project, and we are trying to solve a transportation issue. And so CEQ regulations, which are the implementing regulations from NEPA, say that we need to look at reasonable alternatives. And that means, does the alternative meet the purpose and need? Does it meet the transportation purpose and need? In this case, we did the analysis to the same level that we did the other screened alternatives, and the answer was no. It's not reasonable in that it does not address the transportation need. So I understand, and I appreciate the comment, that it does in fact have less environmental impacts, but it doesn't meet the need, and it's not reasonable to carry it forward. With that said, it will be in the EIS, so I don't want to say it's being totally dismissed. We do have a technical paper that we have done, and we've shared it with the other agencies, and it will be appended to the DEIS so that agents or public can review and other agencies can review it. So it's not completely being dismissed. I mean, we did this hard luck over three months. We certainly don't want that to go to waste. We want folks to see that we have in fact done this.
But Ms. Brookman, I think that the purpose and need that you have defined is sort of like this in terms of blinders, and this group is really responsible for things that happen outside of your blinders in terms of what appears to be your definition of purpose and need. And I think what we're sort of feeling here is that the purpose and need is unnecessarily narrow in terms of a better, full, and holistic study of this issue, and one that ultimately what you're going to be faced with as you deal with us is our purview, which is maybe outside of or expands your purpose and need definition. And I think what we're perceiving is that what you're coming back with is a purpose and need statement that is somewhat unnecessarily narrow in terms of the bigger impacts that all of the approving agencies are going to have to apply in this scenario. Commissioner White.
I want to echo these comments and also say that it's also the public who deserves this information and a more thorough analysis. And I do appreciate you went back and studied it, but respectfully, I don't think you went far enough. And if you, in one of your statements, it says that the alternative would cost the state 300 million. But how do we know how that compares to what your mitigation would cost, would cost when you do take into consideration the parkland? So I don't think that we have enough information to agree with you to say that this analysis is complete enough to take it out of the EIS. It just doesn't, it just doesn't add up to me from a process perspective. And also, I would look to your goals for financial viability and environmental responsibility. That is all part of the balance. It isn't that you just do transportation and disregard what's around it. So I'm a little troubled by that answer, that it can be so easily eliminated. And also, Alternative 5, I mean, they're just dismissed so quickly. So I don't know how you would not want to share with the public that you did a thorough analysis, because you don't want that to come up later in the EIS process, I would think.
All of our technical studies included Alternative 5, so all of the environmental technical studies, and that will be part of the DEIS as well. So all of those technical reports will be appended to the DEIS, which gives the public an opportunity to see the impacts associated with all five.
Can I follow up on that? I'm sorry, just in terms of the Maryland 200 diversion alternative, did you use those same criteria for that one as well? It wasn't clear in the presentation.
So 200 was looked at at the same level of analysis that we did for the screened alternatives to identify the alternatives retained, so the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wright.
Piling on, I, with all due respect, three months is not long enough in any government setting to look at any project. I'm sorry, three months is not due diligence, at least not for a feasibility study. I mean, studying roads and doing NEPA analysis, and we do this all the time. If we were in the private sector, it would no doubt happen faster, but we all know that with any experience, whether, and I've also worked for state government, so I know it's not very different, not Maryland, but Massachusetts. There is, and I can't, I kept, I kept saying to the vice chairman, did they answer the question? They didn't answer the question, did they? Is it me? No, you didn't answer the questions. I don't feel any more informed now than I did an hour ago. And I, it feels, I don't want to go so far as to say it disingenuous, but it's very close. Because, you know, we also have to answer the mail, and that's, but there's answering the mail and, you know, and answering the mail. This feels like you did it because you had to, but you weren't really interested in exploration that's meaningful. You can't, I guess I'm not really looking for an answer, because honestly, you can't convince me that you did due diligence in three months. You were just here in July, and you, and so theoretically, it takes the gears of government a while to get moving. You said three months. There's, you know, four months in between meetings, but it just doesn't feel like you, like the team really wanted to look at another way of doing this.
If I could sort of, kind of add on to Commissioner Wright's question.
I did say, for the record, it approaches disingenuous, not quite.
Okay, I did, yeah, okay. Let's go to 28, please. I think what I found interesting, because I am the Maryland representative for this commission, and I looked at the scenarios for driving that you're looking at, okay? And I guess what I'm trying to figure out is why someone would ever do either of those scenarios. They, you know, going around the rest of the Beltway is not prohibited as another alternative, of course. So, yeah, if you were in Bethesda and you were trying to go to Route 50, would you really go all the way around? I think the alternative was really about people coming from the north or going to the north, and coming from the south and going to the south. That would be the more realistic use of this kind of exercise. Maybe you addressed it with your 15%, I'm not sure. It's very difficult from the information that we have to see. But these two examples seem like absolutely, I would say, red herring. So this approaching disingenuous, I just wanted to pick up on that in terms of this observation. I don't know if anybody has any input on how you'd happen to choose these particular what-ifs when they seem to be the least likely scenarios that anyone would choose in their commutes.
So you think there's no people that live in Silver Spring that work in Virginia or ever travel from Virginia to Silver Spring?
No, sir. No, sir. That's not my commentary. My commentary is, if you live in Silver Spring, you're not going to go up to Maryland 200, go around, and then come back down.
I understand now.
Okay. I do this every day. My office is in Silver Spring, and I live in Howard County, Maryland. So I know the traffic patterns very well. So if you'd like to question me on this, we could spend several hours on this, because I drive that traffic every day.
The suggestion on these slides is not that this trip would be better served or differently served by going up to the ICC and coming back down. What it's saying is that this is kind of an unintended consequence of not building the top side, is that these trips, which, where the diversion alternative is not a reasonable alternative, would see significant increases in travel time relative to the other alternative.
Because of the Maryland 200 option, you're saying?
Because of not constructing improvements on the top side. So.
But I thought we were evaluating Maryland 200 here. I mean, that's what this slide is, that's the title of this slide.
How would this alternative, the alternative which includes widening on the west side, on the east side, but not on the top side, how does that affect travel for people with destinations on the top side, where the ICC is not a reasonable alternative?
Okay, well, that's the disingenuous comment. That's where it came from. If you go back one, please, to the new bottleneck. I guess I'm also wondering what's going on here. So if, is the implication if you, you were coming from Baltimore, and you took the Maryland 200 alternative around, and you then came down south on 270, you would, at the Beltway, if you were going to Virginia, you would not go to that circle?
Correct. Correct. So that would be, yes, that trip would not be affected.
So the bottleneck would be if you happened to go all the way around to almost do a full circle to come back, which again, not many people would choose to do, it would seem to be.
No, so this is for the people that live along the I-270 corridor that commute towards DC. A large percentage of people do that. Many of them come down I-270, and under this alternative, they would run into congestion that would not be there under the other alternatives because of not widening or improving the section on the top side.
But if the people who were going to Virginia from Baltimore around Maryland 200, they would not go through that bottleneck, and in fact, they would go around the spur and move around it.
That is correct.
So again, I.
So their trip, you're right, their trip would be, have less congestion, but would be longer, as Jeff pointed out, and so it would.
Right, understood. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trublock, Mr. Trublock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess I have two points. One is, I just, I want to kind of highlight, I think, what Commissioner White said, which is, you know, what, assessing what is reasonable for a detailed study. And I think, you know, I think there, it seems like there are some alternatives here. You say they're not reasonable, but whether they're reasonable for a detailed study, maybe we could disagree on. And I guess the reason I might disagree on it is because our, you know, if we put our blinders on at NCPC, our, we're here to assess whether no feasible alternative exists. So we're not here to assess transportation impacts. We're not really assessing mitigations. So I just, I'm going to, I fail to see how, given the removal of Alternative 5 and the, and the... 5 and the, and the failure to consider the ICC alternative, how we can make that assessment. And maybe that's more of a question for us and the staff and the legal team. But as it's going now, I'm not sure I would be able to support, support that kind of finding.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Cash.
I just want to say one more thing on, on the reasonable as a standard. I mean, so a few years back in DC, there was a lot of consternation over the Virginia Avenue Tunnel widening it for train traffic. It was like a, over 100-year-old tunnel. The purpose and need that were not met by the old tunnel were that the standard in trains now is these double-decker trains that can carry twice as tall things. It, literally, technology, transportation had evolved to where that tunnel physically was constrained, the purpose and need of moving trains through didn't work anymore, because essentially, the trains were bigger. If the purpose and need here is shaving 10 minutes off a commute, then it's a, it's a moving target. Nothing has changed in the cars that prevents considering the Maryland 200 alternative. We're not talking about, if the purpose and need is just about time and convenience, then we might as well throw NEPA out, because then time and convenience is always going to trump environment. This is talking about the environment, and all of the alternatives that you're giving us trample over the very sensitive environmental impacts that Congress already determined for us to consider, which is why we get a yes or no here. So I just want to go back to, I think the purpose and need is a red herring when you're talking about convenience. There's nothing about the 200 alternative that makes it, there are people will not get from point A to point B. People are getting from Baltimore to, to Fairfax County today. It might take a little bit longer, but there's nothing in the purpose and need that says that it's, you're incapable of achieving your purpose and need, which is going from point A to point B. The purpose of NEPA is environment, and you've, yourself, already identified significantly less environmental impacts, except for the 42 feet of new pervious surface, I guess. I mean, in your own analysis, and for you to throw that out in an environmental analysis just seems to put us at a real disadvantage, because we're left with essentially picking the worst of the, the alternatives you've given us, which really just come down to how you're going to paint the stripes on, on the road, and not about the actual environmental impact that we're going to consider. So I just want to throw out there, again, I, appending it is, is great, you're being transparent and getting the information out of there, but you're precluding that from ever being the preferred alternative, which I doubt that you would make your preferred alternative, but at least get it in there and let the, the public process go forward. And maybe you'll be surprised, and everyone would rather commute for 10 minutes longer and save those, those really sensitive lands.
Commissioner White.
I really like the way you frame that. And I think that is a critical question for us, and it's, it's incomplete information. I'm, I'm not saying you didn't do the same level of analysis on your alternatives, but in this situation, I don't see the harm in including it in the EIS and taking it to the next level, so we have an apples-to-apples comparison, and then the public can choose. And, and I think that we also have to think in the long term, that all these studies show that every new mile of roadway you build will typically be 40% filled up with new drivers immediately, and 100% full in four years, quoting Jeff Speck, who notes, "All these transportation studies." So if we could just take a step back and dig a little deeper in how we think about these alternatives, is what we're asking you to do. And again, appreciate that you took that step. You just didn't go deep enough for us to make a determination that you've done the work we asked you to do.
And, and the other issue is that there, there seems to be a myopic concentration on environmental impact being the idling of cars and emissions. And I think Mr. Cash's point is well taken. That's, that, a myopic view on one, on, what we're asking you to do is sort of open the aperture of the study and think more broadly, and, and even, you know, also to your point about electric cars, in the future, emissions will not be the environmental issue that we'll be looking at. And so, I, and, and to, to Commissioner White's point, you know, what's, why not include it? The work's done. What, what, what's the downside of including it in the final?
Well, to your first point, I just want to say, it's, it's, we have done an air analysis, noise analysis, an analysis to cultural resources, indirect effects, so it's, it's not just on air quality and looking at the emissions. We've, we've done a whole host of environmental review, and all of that will be part of the DEIS. To the second point, again, I think putting it out to the public that it is a reasonable alternative, which is what we should consider as part of the CEQ regulations, it identifies that we should look at reasonable alternatives, one that we would actually put into place that would address the, the transportation purpose and need. So putting it in the document as a reasonable alternative for public comment, I think, is disingenuous to the public, right? It's not addressing the transportation purpose and need.
But it's, 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 you, you very carefully said, this is a transportation project, and that is the purpose and need. But, but a, a unidimensional look at what transportation means of getting, that, if you, if, if you just isolate that view on what the purpose and need is, then another person can come along and easily knock out your argument that convenience has nothing to do with it. Hey, you're getting there A to B, aren't you? So, right, I mean, it's not just a transportation project. It's, because transportation is, you can't reduce it to that kind of, you know, minimalist, it's all about just getting goods, services, people from one point to another point with no consideration of the quality of the experience, conveni, what, I mean, it's, there are lots of people, that, that means a lot of different things. I mean, to, getting from point A to B, people value different things in how that experience takes place. So brevity, most of us would prefer brevity, but I'm sure there are people out there who have that, different ideas. And, and, and I guess the idea, it, it seems that the purpose and need statement is being used to, again, serve a predetermined kind of idea about how the state wants to do this. It, it, I, I don't know how to say it any other way.
Appreciate that. I, I, I think everyone here is well aware of the significant congestion on both of these interstate systems, and it is our responsibility to identify the needs there and develop a purpose and need statement, so that we can develop alternatives that address that purpose and need statement. So it is a, it is a transportation project, we're not just looking at reliability, but we're looking to address the significant congestion that exists today.
Okay.
If I, if I could just make a clarification, too, and our presentation here was to give you a summary of the analysis, and I, I want to make sure that the commission understands that, as mentioned previously in the presentation, that we did evaluate this, this alternative equally to the other screened alternatives. And all that information, so side-by-side comparison will be available as, as an appendix to the document, so people will be able to see all that, all the traffic analysis, all the environmental analysis, every bit that went into this analysis, as did all the other previously screened, so they can do a side-by-side comparison. It was, it was not our intent to come here today and give an in-depth, in-the-weeds, detailed comparison for each of the factors. So I'm sorry if that missed the mark with the commission, but that information will be available when that document is released.
Ultimately, that will be an important part of the 4F process, as you've said. It, it does sort of move it to an appendix in terms of the way the community will view and comment on the, the alternatives, but, so, in some respects, again, I, I think there's a narrowing of the focus, and I, I know, Ms. Brookman, I think your title is an environmental manager, so I'm not sure what that role is in a transportation-only focused without focusing on the environment. So we'll, I hope we'll hear more about that in the future. I'll have a few other points, but do you want to stay on this one a little bit, Commissioner?
Well, I, I mean, I.
May?
I'd like to be able to say something at some point. So, maybe, I don't know if this is the time.
Peace be with you.
Thank you. So, I, I'm, I'm not going to really join the bandwagon here. I mean, I appreciate the fact that there's so many people on the dais who are standing up for impacts to parkland. I think that's really great, and I, and I'm, you know, God bless you, let's all fight for parkland. I will also say, however, that the Park Service is unfortunately all too accustomed to being subjected to road projects by others that affect parkland, and we know the process very well, and we've been through 4F many times, we've been 4F'd many times.
So to speak.
So, and, including GSA doing it to us once, but anyway.
I have no idea.
I have no idea. So, but we, we have an understanding of where this comes from, and where this battle, I think, really should be fought, is in the purpose and need, and, and understanding in the broader picture what problem we are trying to solve, right? And instead of just immediately going to the solutions, which is putting in more asphalt so you can move more cars. And I think there has been significant discussion in the community about alternatives having to do with transit and so on, and I think those are vitally important. But I honestly don't think that we're going to gain anything significant by forcing the Maryland 200 alternative through to the next step, because, again, if it does not meet the purpose and need, it really cannot be selected in the end. I mean, that's just the truth of NEPA. And so, I, I mean, we're sort of resigned to it. That being said, we do have concerns about some of the particulars of this as it affects National Park Service land, particularly how the, excuse me, the direct access lanes onto the George Washington and Baltimore-Washington parkways, because we don't see that they're, they are really enhancing the project. I mean, there's a minimal increase in reliability, and it's really just about stacking all of these cars onto our roads, as opposed to stacking them within the, the right-of-way of, of 495. So, I, I mean, I think that there's, you know, I appreciate the fact that we've had, we've been involved in the process, and we are working with you and are trying to minimize those impacts, and hope you will continue to work with us to minimize those impacts, because we're, you know, we are fighting to keep the parkway nature of the parkways that we operate, in addition to defending all parkland. So again, I'm with you all in spirit, I'm just, maybe I'm just jaded, but I'm ready to accept this and focus on the specific impacts on Park Service lands.
It would seem that having an alternative that would have tried to look at avoiding impacting Capper-Crampton land would, in light of what is a known conflict with congressional direction for this commission, is an important consideration going forward. And so I, I think rather than just to continue to beat that drum, we, we, I think we've sent the message to you on that one, and we hope you'll think about that as you take this forward. I do have a couple of other questions, just specifics about, like Alternative 5. I wasn't able to discern how much Capper-Crampton land would be affected by Alternative 5. Can somebody comment on that?
Sure. So Alternative 5 with the Northwest branch, it's exactly the same, Alternative 5 versus Alternative 9. There are less impacts with Alternative 5 at Sligo Creek, about a 0.8 acre difference. And then with Rock Creek, it is the same as well. I'm sorry, no, there's a one-acre difference. So Northwest, it's the same, Sligo, 0.8, and then a one-acre difference at Rock Creek.
Mm-hmm. So hence, again, having all the same build alternatives going forward, you just kind of, again, I think reinforced the observation that the attempt to try to avoid or minimize Capper-Crampton is sort of being disregarded in your choice of alternatives. I'll just leave it at that. The other question I have is just these diagrams that show the, the reduction from 14 to 3 acres on the Rock Creek Park impact. It would be good if we could, when you, when you come back, you talked about retaining walls, you talked about not moving the Beltway, you talked about not moving Rock Creek, which that sounded really good. We would really want to see specific strategies of what is going to be involved in order to achieve that, so that, and we do appreciate that you're working to minimize the impact. That, that is absolutely moving in the right direction. But helping us further understand the design implications of that are going to be part of our consideration. Any other, Commissioner White?
I, I just can't resist that, that we should not become jaded, and I understand it, and I feel that way on certain days, but it is really important that we spent time talking about how departments of transportation in this country define purpose and need, and have a very convenient argument, this is about transportation, instead of thinking holistically about our communities, it's transportation. All of your arguments are about economic development and efficiency, 10 minutes of wasted time, work productivity going down. But parks and open space are also part about, are part of the economic vitality of communities, and there are lots of places who are pushing back, Dallas, Texas for one, saying, "We don't need this. We'll take the congestion over these other issues." So I think that's the backdrop of where we're coming from and thinking about these issues holistically, and answering the questions that we ask are important to your two goals of financial viability and environmental responsibility. So that, that was the point. But I, I for one, I, I really have to push back about becoming jaded, that every highway project in this country is defined in such a narrow way, because it should also be do no harm and lessen the impact. But anyway, sorry. Sorry, Peter, I had to respond.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, I promise, I'm only going to take one more whack at this horse. I, I do have a question about the process here, NEPA in general. So I normally see a no-build alternative whenever we have a DEIS. Is that, that's required under law, or we just do? So if, if we're, if, if we're just thinking about, oh, well, the point of NEPA is do not include anything that's not, doesn't meet the programming, that's not reasonable, why would we even, I mean, the no-build by its own definition would not meet the purpose and need, or is not reasonable, if it's, if you have anything more than what's there. I mean, the whole point of why I would think that, that we include a no-build alternative is that we can compare apples to apples, what the impacts of all these different things are going to be. So I think that, that if no-build obviously doesn't meet the, the programming or the reasonableness and need, I mean, it, it wouldn't be in there. I think that, that the point of, of this reasonableness is that we say that, that if, if it's not reasonable that trains are double the height that they used to be when this tunnel was built, then that's not reasonable. I think that, that any transportation project, like I said earlier, NEPA just goes out the window, if you can arbitrarily define a purpose and a need as to, we want people to get to work 10 minutes faster. And I think that, that we, that maybe other commissioners are right, that, that transportation projects have just gotten a pass over the years, because we all think that we need a lot more, we, we just need to, to build the roads. I mean, you're lucky that, that we aren't demanding that, that you do do a lot more like transit projects and all that, because I would think that holistically, not, outside of this project, if you really want to talk about, if the purpose and need is moving people, not just moving people on a road, it's, we're getting back to that myopic view. So I think that, that just look at one more alternative that might not quite meet the purpose and need, but it's better than what you got now. So I think that, that it's, it's still just saying the purpose and need is, is just a, a really easy way to get away from looking at reasonable, possibly reasonable alternatives that, that do a very reasonable job of protecting the environment. And if you are stuck in gridlock for 10 minutes longer, at least you will get to look at very nice parkland on the bridges while you're there. So I'll send it there, thanks.
And, and it seems like it would help us seek concurrence with your process if we could convince you to put that back in there.
I do want to acknowledge that, you know. I do want to acknowledge that the emphasis on using these managed lanes for multimodal uses has been enhanced with this work that you brought back, and we really appreciate that. It seemed like a, a low-hanging fruit item, and I think you found it to. It seemed like a low-hanging fruit item, and I think you found it to be one, and it's a win-win. So, let's, thank you for, for that. Any last-minute new comments? Okay. Well, with that, I think we want to thank you for coming and doing the work you've done, and for hopefully listening. And we've tried to listen to you as well, and we will look forward to the next round of engagement here as you move forward through this very challenging and important process. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, I think with no other anticipated business for today, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much. See you in December. Happy Thanksgiving.